Good morning. I'd like to call the Lane County Board of Commissioners to order for our regular meeting Tuesday, September 22nd, 2015. And the first item on the agenda is Adjustment to the Agendas. And I've got several items to note. First, that there are three emergency business items on the agenda today. Second, there are two time certants this morning, so you're going to have to be conscious of our schedule this morning. Third is to note that Item 8C, which is Agenda Team Request and Work Session Request, I'm going to move that to the end of the day after the work session in case there are additional items that are generated during the work session. And then also, I'd like to note that the afternoon work session will be in the Board of Commissioners Conference Room. And finally, I'd just like to note that there's no executive session today. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda today? Seeing and hearing none, then we'll move on to Item 2, which is Public Comments. I have two people signed up for public comment right now. You'll have three minutes to address the board if you'll just state your name and where you're from for the record, and then your three minutes will begin. I have Joe Koswick, and that'll be followed by Jennifer Frenzer. So, Joe?
I have -- I do mapping, so I have maps. The subject was homeless students.
If you want to drop one there, we can pass them down.
Thank you. The problem hasn't gone away.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and where you're from for the record and speaking towards the mics. The mics are very directional, so if you wouldn't mind aiming the mic towards your mouth.
This is...
No, that thing with the stick, flexible stick right here.
Oh, this is...
This.
Is it fly?
There you go. Saw this. I didn't think it was fly. Thank you.
Yeah, Joe Koswick, living in Markola, 7041. Post Office Box 7041 is where I can be contacted, (97454).
Thank you.
I'm retired from local government, and I've done voluntary work in mapping data that nobody else seems to want to map. And you've got five maps in your packet there. The first one, I'm going to go through the first three fairly fast because I want to get to the last one. It shows that Lane County, it's done by the Department of Education, it shows that Lane County has 2,151 students in the homeless category for the year, school year of 2013, 2014. That means Lane County's ranked third in the state on that issue. At the bottom of the page, you'll see the categories that are required for school districts to report homeless students. And I don't read those, you can read those at your leisure. Now, the second map, again, is homeless students, and this doubling up issue is major. Lane County, again, comes in third with 1,646 students. And at the bottom, there's issues when you double up overcrowding, students not really having the kind of space they need to do their homework or whatever else. Now, the third map focuses on Lane County specifically. The three major school districts of Bethel, Eugene, and Springfield account for 75% of the homeless students. But as you can see, the rural areas aren't immune to this issue. The other map, the next map is another map, Department of Education, of May 16th, 2014. It shows total students in poverty. This data is used by the school system to allocate money, I guess, to the boards of education, and it's a factor of 1.25, I think, for kids that are economically disadvantaged because they know the school system's going to have difficulty dealing with that. And the last map is Temporary Aid to Needy Families. That was a program that revised the welfare system back in 1996, and it took away the handout program and made it a hand-up program, basically. And it was a lot of conditions that people have to make some progress in showing they can be self-sufficient. Get that word out. This map shows three, again, major school districts, and there's about 10,000 people on this program back in 2013. I didn't finish the map, I couldn't find anybody that was interested in the subject at the time, but I think it has value today because under the new TANF program, Temporary Aid to Needy Families, you only get five years on that program, and you're supposed to be self-sufficient. So, all these people, for most part, have exceeded, exhausted their eligibility, and that's where I'm getting to with homeless students. I think when they lose a cash benefit from this program, I think it puts a situation in where they may not be able to afford their rent. And that, as a result, ends up with the homeless student situation. What I'd like to suggest, I went as far as I can go with this as an individual, but I think the county commissioner can talk to the state. I think you have to go upstream to the state to get some help from this one. I think you can generate a spreadsheet. I discovered that the TANF program, you can project and predict when people are going to lose or exhaust their eligibility. And if that period of time is during when school is in session and they lose the cash benefit that may have kept them in their rent, then you can project that the students most likely are going to be homeless or lose their standard, their regular residence. So, I think what I'm suggesting is maybe the county commissioner can get involved in this and ask the state. I can't ask the state to meet with the Department of Human Services and the Department of that does the child support because these two things are linked. And child support may be a bigger problem than just people losing their eligibility, exhausting the eligibility on TANF.
Thank you.
Okay?
Please stay and listen. Thank you. Wait for comments, please. So, don't go home yet. Don't go home. Okay, thank you. Jennifer Frenzer?
I'm Jennifer Frenzer from Eugene, and I wanted to thank the previous speaker. This is an issue that touches my home, my household, because some of my son's friends end up in our house. And I sent him away to college this weekend, and he said, "Mama, take care of my friends, and they'll take care of you." It's not what I was expecting my son's last words to be, but it's true. Our kids do, are taking care of one another, and there's something really amazing about that, and there's something really sad about that, too. I wanted to talk to you today about the two things, NHS and rest stops, having that hat on. And I wanted to thank you for trying what you've been doing with the Knightondale Health Sanctuary and the rest stops. We do need more properties, we need more sites, we need more flexibility with citing the rest stops. The weather has changed, obviously, and the transition, the transition shelter, the emergency outdoor shelter, that model is filling an emergency gap we have in our community, but we need more of those spots. And so, I'm hoping we can build on the successes we've had with NHS. We lost a homeless community member this summer, Mike Pori, and his death impacted many of us. It occurred to me at Mike's memorial that we need a place for people to rest while they're living, but we do need a place to memorialize them when they've passed. As folks pass way too early, and we don't even have a place for them when they've died. So, I would love a place, either public property, of course, to memorialize the people who were on the front line of poverty, and that's our homeless people living on the street. So, for my Eugene human rights hat on, the Human Rights Commission hat, I'd like to invite you all to an event. There's a webinar on October 6th, and it's at 11:00 a.m. We're finding a location for it, but I'd like as many community members and officials to be there who can answer questions about what criminalization of the homeless actually is. And so, this is the topic of the webinar, and it's hosted by the National Law Center on homelessness and poverty. And I'm hoping that some community conversations will come out of it and that we can continue hosting the education about what that is. I know that law enforcement, I would like to see an improvement in the interactions between law enforcement and the homeless. Right now, what they hear as homeless people is, "Oh, we're not citing you or arresting you for camping, we're citing you and arresting you for trespassing." So, semantics does not eliminate criminalization. So, I think that we're going to find that out. There was a press release last week, again, from the National Law Center, indicating that the requirements for some HUD applications have changed, and now there is a section that does ask about criminalization. So, it does begin to impact funding. We have to change how we're approaching it, and there are experts willing to show us how, the alternatives, how to decriminalize, how to make the adjustments in our policy and our practices and our laws, what happens in these interactions to stop the criminalization of survival behavior. And if we don't have shelter for people that's indoors, I mean, it's great we're doing the outdoor experiment because we have a stopgap measure, but when we don't have indoor shelter that's sufficient, then it does subject us to the appellate court decision that said you, we can't enforce these sleeping, the camping bans or the public sleeping bans against folks. Thank you.
Thank you. So, that's everyone I had signed up to speak to the board this morning. Was there anyone else that wanted to address the board this morning in public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to Commissioner's response to public comments and/or other issues in the run trends. Commissioner Farr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kowaski? Kowaskiwick, I'm sorry. Thank you for, wow, wow, these maps are great. Clearly, you did a lot of research to get that. And as far as getting more information from upstream, I would love to talk to you about how we can really make these maps speak out to people. It gives a really, really stark example of what is happening. You know, you look at the one map that shows the number in each school district, this one right here, shows the number in each school district, and it shows Eugene 4J with 701 and Bethel with 335. Now, 4J is four times the size of Bethel. So, if you look at that, in fact, there's about double the rate of homelessness for students in Bethel School District, which is in northwest Eugene. Springfield is close to double the rate of 4J based on the size of the district. Springfield's about 20% higher than Bethel. So, we just opened two new schools in Bethel, Malibu and Fairfield, which address the heart of the community that is in the deepest need of housing and housing stability. I won't go on in any great detail, but the year 2010 numbers on TANF, that was just after I left food for Lane County. We did a lot of work on TANF, making certain that TANF was continued because, as you mentioned, it is a hand-up, not a hand-out. It's an opportunity for people to, for some self-determination and some choices on how family needs are met, particularly at the time I was most interested in food security, but housing security is exceedingly important. I'll mention that on Friday, we had a fundraiser for, excuse me, on Sunday, not Friday, on Sunday, we had a fundraiser for Emerald Villages Eugene. And Emerald Villages is a project that is underway right now. There's nothing like it in the nation, but it fills a gap in the housing ladder where we have emergency housing, which gets people out from, basically out from sleeping on the streets or in doorways, which goes into transitional housing and temporary housing, and then into more permanent Section 8 or HUD financed housing. There's a big gap in between. Opportunity Village provides some relief in that gap, but once people have spent their time in Opportunity Village, there's really no place for them to go after that other than circle back into the system. So, we're addressing where the needs are between the Opportunity Village-type housing, which is somewhat dignified, although no electricity, no plumbing, you know, central shower systems, et cetera, central shower and meal preparation facility. But Emerald Village Eugene, it's an equity-building possibility for homeless people where they can actually pay a little bit of rent, and a part of that rent goes into actually ownership of the houses that they're going in. Now, the houses that they're looking at, about 25,000 on property that's already been built with showers, with food facilities, and it's a step in the right direction. They can be built for about 25,000 apiece compared to what may be 200,000 or more for standard subsidized housing. So, it's a step in between that actually helps people develop equity. Now, the fundraiser on Sunday night generated about $125,000 in private donations. So, this is being funded in part by government, tiny, tiny little part by government, mostly by private donation, a lot of volunteer work. You can read more about it on the website. It's a very, very exciting prospect for the future. You know, I was at Calipoya High School's graduation last fall, excuse me, last spring. Calipoya High School is an alternate high school in the Bethel District. And of the graduates of Calipoya High School, which had the highest graduation rate of any high school in Lane County, of the graduates that came out of Calipoya, more than half of them lived a life of homelessness or housing insecurity. It's an illustration that kids can get ahead even in the direst situations, but if we're going to really make certain that our next, the next generation has the greatest opportunity, we have to take care of the housing insecurity. And there are ways that we can do it, there are ways that we're addressing it, and I'm pretty excited about the future. And so, we're right on the verge of really doing some big things right now. Thank you for being here today, and thank you for pointing it out through these maps. They're very illustrative maps. Thank you very much. And Ms. Frenzer, thank you very much for being here. Thank you for your testimony yesterday at Human Services Commission. A lot of people heard what you had to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Eichen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'm just going to say Joe and try to mess up your last name. So, really want to say thank you for this information. When I served as mayor of the city of Springfield, we actually had this organization, we'd meet twice a year called Team Springfield. And Team Springfield was a city, school district, Lam Lane Park and Recreation District, and the Springfield Utility Board. And really, after the aftermath of the Thurston shooting clear back in 1998, this is when really this all took place, and it's been ongoing since. And in fact, I will say that we've been pretty blessed to our new Public Information Officer, Devin, actually worked with the Springfield School District. And I think what your, the information you have here, something that we, as Team Springfield, we understood this and knew that this was an issue out there. And in fact, I remember Gloria Griffiths was, obviously, was the leader of this on the school district side, but this was something that we really channeled and knew that this was an issue out there. A couple of things had occurred, and I'll never forget this. So, when then our superintendent Nancy Golden talked about when the Great Recession hit, and what you have to remember is that the state as a whole is just now coming out of the Great Recession. Prior to that, it was maybe a half a dozen counties. It's now the state, and still pockets of the state are still not out of this. And so, we're talking from, we're six or seven years into this, and this is where we are. But think about this for a moment. Just when Hynex and Monaco Coach shuttered, those two operations, and she used those as examples, I say Hynex. People would gripe about Hynex here at times, but Hynex employed 450 Springfield residents. Springfield residents, not Eugene, but Springfield residents. That was 450 family wage jobs that were eliminated. Monaco Coach employed over 600 Springfield residents, and that was family wage jobs that were shuttered. We have not replaced those. And at that time, if you looked at these statistics, at that time, there were much less, and in fact, on the system as a whole, there wasn't quite the issue that's happening now. So many either families moved completely out of the area, and I'm not just talking about Lane County, left the state of Oregon because there was some more, there was sunnier opportunities, or they've had to go on assistance and actually been part of that ever since then. The system has been strained because of so many of these family wage jobs that have been shuttered, whether it's Lane County or throughout the state. And we're just to the point where we're just beginning to recover in certain parts. I would say, if you look at the numbers today, you're probably looking at 60 to 70% of the state is beginning to get there, where beforehand, at one time, it seemed like Washington County was the economy of Oregon, along with a couple of other counties. But since then, we're beginning to see the state beginning to get recovered from the job losses that happened six years ago. We're just now back to where we were six years ago. Unfortunately, some of those jobs do not pay the same wage, let alone index to inflation what they paid then. So, it's put a strain on the system. And so, I think what you're bringing to us right now, and I agree, this is an opportunity, I think, for the board to, again, to have conversations with our legislators, not only about making sure there's dollars available for our future, our future generation here in our state, but also talk to our legislators about, we need to continue to work to really pass legislation, I think, as pro-opportunity. I mean, I want to make sure that employees are taken care of as well as anybody else, but you have to have employers to make sure that people are employed, and sometimes I think that gets lost in the conversation. So, I think what you brought before us, and I really, this is really detailed, I mean, this is excellent. I mean, the work you put in, I'm impressed, and I want to say thank you very much for that. And I hope that we could potentially count on you to, you know, if we have opportunities available for volunteerism here at Lane County, I would hope that your name's at the top of the list because I want to say thank you for this. But, you know, I just wanted to kind of give you some thoughts on, in Springfield, that's how we addressed it, in sort of the Team Springfield mode, but I think by bringing this before us, this, I think, adds an additional partner to work with our delegation in Oregon and Salem to make sure that our future generation will be taken care of, and they should have opportunities here in our state without feeling the need that they need to go somewhere else. So, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Thank you very much. Well, first of all, I want to thank both of our presenters this morning from the public to talk to us about the problems of homelessness. I think that these maps that have been presented here are showing 2,151 homeless students in the grades K through 12 in Lane County for the school year 2013, 2014, and then 1,646 number of homeless students in doubled-up living situations in the same school year for Lane County. They're pretty serious numbers, they're really significant numbers, and my heart breaks for these children because they can't really wait around for Congress or the state legislature to pass legislation that might bring their parents some jobs, really, we're talking about their lives right now. And I really appreciate the significance of this. I also think it's interesting that we have said that we were going to deal with homelessness on this board, and yet we see that there's, you know, over 3,000 children that are either in this doubled-up or homeless situation in this community, and that's Lane County, including our richest areas and our, of course, poorest areas. And I just think it's something our board, our departments, really, we need to be focused on this because it's gotten to the point where we are in the top tier of the state in population of these desperate people and the children that they're responsible for. So, to me, it just really, you know, means that we need to redouble our efforts, and it has to be something internal to us, what can we do with the resources we have. And I would love to see action on other levels as well, but I think we have more control over what we do here. And I just want to thank Joe specifically for the work on this, and any follow-up you can do on per capita or per school district head count to give us an idea of relative strength and weakness throughout the county and the school districts. That would be helpful to our staff as well. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart? Thanks, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank the speakers. Joe, about a month ago, I learned for the first time, I attended Oak Ridge's superintendent's delivery to his educators, kind of kickoff for the year. And at that time, I learned that virtually, I believe that his entire district qualifies, all the students qualify for free and reduced lunches. And in fact, they instituted a program, which I'd never heard of before, where they actually feed the kids at the end of the day so that they have a meal for the end of the day. So, this is definitely a serious issue and concern. In South Lane School District, I believe Krista Parent told me that she has 82% of the kids in the district qualify for free and reduced lunches. And that number has not slowed down, it's just steadily gotten worse and worse. As I look a little bit historically, and I know it has been mentioned by all of our colleagues, that we have an immediate need that needs to be addressed, but then we also have the long-term need. And if you go back historically-wise, you know, back when I was in school 35, 40 years ago, there was very few people on free and reduced lunches. And if you looked at the opportunities that existed in the communities where I lived, there was plentiful jobs, they were living wage jobs. And that's what we need to be trying, I think, is to try to address the near problem of how do we help these folks in their current need, but then also, how do we focus on trying to improve the economic and the opportunities for these folks to be able to, you know, let's help lift them up, let's help them provide for themselves. I do have one request that I would, you know, ask Commissioner Farr because he's our representative on the Poverty and Homeless Board, that you take this information to it and present it to the board. And then also, I would hope that our, we get periodic updates from our staff. Pearl Wolf has specifically given us some updates on homeless counts and that. And I'd like to try to connect these numbers with the numbers that she's given in the past because this number is much larger than the ones that I remember. So, I'd like to kind of make sure that I'm refreshed with really what's taking place in our communities. And the other item, I just wanted to say, Jennifer, that, you know, our administrator and our board's been very supportive of trying to help, be supportive in these rest stops. I think you're aware of that, and I know that, you know, our effort hasn't stopped, and I appreciate the fact that you are continuing to, you know, represent the need in our community. And I really appreciate your thought about what do you do with somebody that, you know, a homeless individual that, you know, passes away. I have a wife that works in the funeral business, she's a funeral director, and occasionally down in Cottage Grove, we have that situation. And, you know, it really is an issue, an issue of not only being able to take care of that individual because there's no resources or a small pittance from the state, but then where do you, you know, put that individual so that, you know, that it has some decency? So, I'm going to work with my wife and her employer to see, you know, if they can come up with something that they could present as a solution for that. So, thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Thank you. And I just want to say that, you know, this board does take homelessness seriously as an issue. And in fact, last week, in a unanimous... And in fact, last week, in an unanimous vote of the board, we approved our Behavioral Health and Criminal Justice System Plan, which was about the integration of our behavioral health programs with our criminal justice system and trying to divert people from that system so that they can get treatment and help with their underlying behavioral health issues that usually drive a lot of the homelessness that end up in the, you know, criminal system for, you know, various behaviors, whether it's trespass or other issues, to try and prevent them from getting that criminal record that also makes it difficult to get housing a lot of times. So we're doing a lot of work that's pretty on the cutting edge of integrating those services. And at the same time, this board has allocated millions of dollars annually to homelessness prevention and sheltering programs, everything from, you know, what we spend on the Egan Warming Center to our support of agencies like Shelter Care. It's something that is, you know, a central part of what this board does. And then we also sit as the housing authority and support all the HUD permanent housing. So it's a serious issue that we take seriously. That all said, I appreciate the data maps we got, but sometimes data without context is just that data. One of the things I'd like to see is the definitions behind the numbers. What does, you know, when you have a number of so many homeless students in Lane County, what is the definition of a homeless student? Is that one night spent couch surfing because temporarily ran away from home and then got rehoused a couple of days later through counseling services of Looking Glass? Is that supposed to be the entire school year spent homeless? You know, is it a significant portion? What's that definition mean? You know, to, the other thing I'd like to see is those maps adjusted for population. Because if you look at the maps, they're basically a heat map of the population of Oregon and Lane County. So, you know, do we have a significant problem in comparison to the rest of the state if you took that and did a per-thousand population? You know, are we much worse off than Marion County or Clackamas County when it comes to homeless students? So I appreciate the data, but I'd like to see a little bit more. I'm a data person, too. As an engineer, so I always want to see, you know, what's driving that data? What's that definition of a homeless student? You know, what is it comparable to the other counties when you start adjusting? Because of course, you know, Harney County is going to look like they have very few homeless students, but Harney County also has very few people. You know, so adjusting it for population would be interesting to see that heat map. So I appreciate the information, I appreciate the public comment, bringing this issue up. And I really appreciate the effort of the board and our staff in trying to help with these issues. Everything from, you know, finding a new home for the Nightingale Rest Stop on County property to our support of other programs. We're working in every way we can to integrate services to try and prevent homelessness. And I think one of the real issues for me is youth homelessness because once somebody gets past two weeks of homelessness as a youth, they're 80 percent more likely to be chronically homeless as an adult. So if we could deal with that situation, I think that would be, you know, a prevention on down the road if we could deal with youth first. So I appreciate bringing that to the board.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. Just a quick addition. You know, Lane County has done a great deal as far as, in the last four years, in the last two years even, as far as addressing homelessness situations. And the attitude that we're displaying toward it really is exemplary, as far as I'm concerned. I'd like to point out that, actually, first, I'd like to take the testimony and from the public and from the board today, I'd like to put it on YouTube because I think we've done a really good presentation, really good response from each of the commissioners, and point out that our county administrator, Steve Mokrhyeski, has been with us now for a little less than two years. And I was talking to him the other day, and I hope he doesn't mind that I called us out, but I'm going to do it anyway. And Steve showed me a letter that he wrote to his congressman when he was 12 years old regarding homelessness in his state and in his city. When he was 12 years old, and his congressman wrote back to him regarding potential solutions and things that Mr. Mokrhyeski, then young man Mokrhyeski, little boy Mokrhyeski, I think, 12 years old when he wrote this letter. And since then, Steve has, he's been, had his eye on homelessness, he's had his eye on poverty. And when he came to the county, I'll point out that when he gave his budget message last year, he actually talked about poverty and homelessness in his budget message. I've never heard that from an administrator in the city or in the county. So we have an eye on it. And as Commissioner Bozovic pointed out, our behavioral health report came in last week, and we unanimously passed the Behavioral Health Strategic Plan. So now we're at square one. And I'll point out, square one villages, just coincidentally, we're at square one as far as how we are going to address it for the future, and not just addressing what's happening today, but what's happening for the future. And I'd like to invite Commissioner Sorensen to come and visit the Poverty and Homelessness Board sometime and see what the county is actually doing. Poverty and Homelessness Board is a board that reports to the county commissioners, makes recommendations to the county commissioners, but it's an intergovernmentally made-up board, which includes officials from the city of Eugene, from the city of Springfield, and lots of providers from agencies throughout the county, including Jacob Fox from HACs, including Paul Solomon from Sponsors. And I'm on the board, and this board has selected me as the liaison to the board. Mayor Percy's on the board, State Representative Val Hoyle has been on the board. We're paying very close attention to how we can specifically address it and how we can leverage the things that we do in ways that make a difference for the future. There's a great deal to say about it. And I think if you were to go to www-squareonevillages.org, that'll tell you about what Square One Villages is doing as far as addressing that intermediate step of homelessness. We have a long way to go, but we do have some traction. Thank you very much for being here today.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Thank you very much. You know, one of the ways you tell what people work on is what they say they're working on. And our Lane County Strategic Plan Overview gives three different categories of things we're going to work on. We're going to work on safe and healthy county, a vibrant community, and infrastructure. And you dig down into, say, one of them like infrastructure, and we're going to improve the existing park grounds and create partnerships that invest in infrastructure, that markets Lane County parks as a destination for residents and visitors. That's an example out of our one-page Lane County Strategic Plan Overview. And this plan consists of more than this one-page document. This plan is more than one page. But I do think that it's important that we highlight what it is we're going to be working on. And if we're going to be doing more in the area of homelessness, say, at the same level of commitment to improve existing park grounds, then we would want that in our summary of our overview so that when people see what it is we say we're working on, we can see we're working on it. If we have 3,000 or 4,000 children that are homeless or doubled up, and we want to do something about that, then I think that's part of what this plan should be. And this plan is not a, you know, write one plan, put it up on the wall, the end. It's an ongoing plan. It's revised, it's going to be revised again. And I think it's an opportunity for us to take some of the data that's been presented. And I, too, believe in data. I believe that we need more data. And that's one of the reasons I asked specifically about the ratio of the students to the number of homeless or doubled-up students, is that that would be useful to us and our departments in responding and doing something about that. So I appreciate the opportunity for a second round of response to public comment. And I really think that since there's so much interest on the board in this, that maybe this is the topic of a work session. And concerning the Poverty and Homeless Board, perhaps we could learn if the Poverty and Homeless Board make recommendations. They're supposed to make recommendations. What recommendations have they made? Because it'd be great to follow up on those recommendations. In fact, I think I'll send a note to Alicia Hayes at the department to find out if the Poverty and Homeless Board has made any recommendations to the Board of Commissioners because they're advisory to the Board of Commissioners.
I believe we need to move on.
Well, rest stops for one thing. I mean, a ton of recommendations.
I think we need to move this along, we've got some time certance. So our next item is emergency business, and the first item, 4A, is county council and the matter of approving a letter of support for amicus brief for the coastal counties.
Morning, Board. This is, should be a relatively quick matter. You'll recall that we received a briefing from Wayne Belmont, who is the Lincoln County Council. And this is a letter of support that he would append to his brief along with these other counties. And essentially, what it boils down to is local control and local input over the Oregon Territorial Sea Plan and the development of that. I don't really have anything else unless you have a specific question to me. I think Mr. Belmont was pretty thorough last week.
Commissioner Sorensen.
All right, just a few questions. Did you ever find out the motivations or the backgrounds of Mr. Yamamoto and the other gentleman, who's the other plaintiff in the case?
I, Commissioner Sorensen, I believe Mr., my recollection is Mr. Belmont, and I thought you and some other commissioners looked up. I thought he believed that they were involved in the actual group that developed it or parts of groups. I think the way Mr. Belmont described it is different representatives of different types of industries and stuff. So I think he answered that last week.
Okay, so they, they're private parties suing the state of Oregon, claiming the state violated a procedural aspect of the ocean policy law of the state of Oregon.
I believe what he said was that they were part of different, and I'm not saying this is the group they were with, but for example, they were part of the subgroup that was assigned to the fisheries, and they worked with people to develop the fisheries part of it, and they believe that the LCDC thing violated. So it's my understanding they're suing in that capacity, as people who participated in it, not just a random citizen on the coast.
Okay, but they represented the commercial fishing industry component of that committee that was working on what should happen to the ocean?
No, I did not say that. I said specifically, I use that as an example. I believe Mr. Belmont indicated that there were different groups of individuals. There were commercial fishermen, there were recreational people, there were all these different groups, and he wasn't sure which one they were on. But all of those groups worked on their specific issue and contributed it towards the plan. So I want to make that clear. I think he used that as an example. He believed that they were involved in some aspect of fisheries, and he didn't know whether it was commercial or recreational.
Okay. And regarding the counties' role in this, the counties are not suing the state, but the counties, all of them, except Lane County, and if Lane County takes this action today, all of the Oregon counties will then be saying that they want to submit an amicus brief to the court saying essentially that they agree with these plaintiffs, these private-party plaintiffs, they're suing the state, saying the state didn't follow the state law. And we're being asked to join that amicus brief, and in all probability, we'll be on amicus brief.
Yeah, and the, as I understand, yes, the, in general terms, what these counties are doing is they say that the state created a process, these counties and all these people or all these individuals participated in the process, and the state changed the rules. That's essentially what the argument is. And the briefs by the counties are asking the Court of Appeals to affirm the process that was originally agreed upon.
Okay.
And we were, and it was, I think, Mr. Belmont mentioned, it was just an oversight that we were not included in the original request. That's why this is coming up when it is. He asked to file his brief by, I believe, this Friday, so this gets to be appended.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. I'd like to move approval that we send the letter and supporting the amicus brief.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? Commissioner Sorensen.
Thank you very much. You know, it's discretionary with the Board of Commissioners as to whether we file an amicus brief in appellate courts in Oregon. You have to want to do it, it's not something you're required to do. And so in this case, you know, I'd be more interested in this as an amicus brief if the counties of the Oregon coast were suing the state and saying the Ocean Policy Advisory Committee work has been intruded upon by another state agency called the Department of Land Conservation and Development and the Land Conservation and Development Commission, and that because of that, these coastal counties, including Lane County, have been disadvantaged. But in fact, what is going on in this case is that the counties are not suing the state. None of the coastal counties are suing the state. What is happening is that two people from Tillamook County who are on the Ocean Policy Advisory Committee activity or workforce, volunteers, they are suing the state. They are saying that the LCDC has impacted the work of the Ocean Policy Advisory Committee. And so our relationship, Lane County's relationship to all this, is a bit more tangential than just if all the coastal counties were getting together and saying the state was violating some procedure. So I feel like, you know, given the limited research I've done on this, is that these individuals are motivated, they're motivated to sue the state, they've sued the state. And, you know, I'm not expressing any opinion about whether they should win or lose, but I do think that Lane County has limited resources, and I don't think we should necessarily pile on on one side of the case, particularly when we're using public money to assist in the lawsuit against the state, which is public. So the public is paying really both parts of this lawsuit if Lane County's part of it. So it's discretionary, I wouldn't use this discretion. I realize the other commissioners intend on using that discretion and spending the very small amount of money that's involved here, but I just don't think we should do it.
If I can, there is, just to be clear, I want to make sure you understand, as far as I know, the only expense that will be involved in Lane County was the cost of printing the letter because Mr. Belmont is going to do all of the briefing, and the only thing our participation will be is adding this letter to the brief. And he is, I think, I thought he made it very clear, he is not representing those individuals, he is representing the interest of the counties in this process. That's what the amicus brief is, and that's what the process is. They're not a party.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. I'm going to vote in favor of this. You know, the amicus brief and the, I'm not an attorney, so these terms are a little bit foreign to me, but amicus curiae?
It's friend of the court.
Friend of the court. And really, it's not, it's a comment on litigation, it's not actual litigation, as I understand. And it's basically giving some information that is important to us, that is a part of the litigation that's being considered.
It's essentially, I think that's actually a really good way to put it together. Essentially, what it is, is you've got these other plaintiffs that are pursuing the litigation, and the briefing that Mr. Belmont is doing is saying, telling the court, this is how this process is impacting this group of people, and here's another way to look at it.
Essentially, that's what I thought in this letter, we've just kind of joined the argument, this is our point of view on it. You know, Lane County is a coastal county. A lot of folks who live in the valley don't really fully grasp that, but we're actually the most populous of all Oregon's coastal counties. There are more people living in Lane County than any other coastal county. And we have a, our coastline is almost as long as Platteup County, you know, which is, you think of that as nothing but coastal, that's Astoria and Seaside. So it's, you know, I think it's, I'm in favor of this. It's just a matter of us explaining that we are, explaining our position on it. It's not, we're not a part of the, we're not paying for the lawyers, we're not paying for any part of the litigation, but we're just giving our opinion on it. And if somebody disagrees with the opinion, then they should disagree with this vote. But if they agree that, by voting against it, it seems that it would probably just be disagreeing with the opinion that we have. So I'm in favor of it.
So I'll just comment briefly towards the motion. I am pleased these two individuals brought this suit because fortunately, they're paying enough attention to get the suit in in time relative to the time constraints of being able to appeal the process. It was unfortunate the counties weren't able to act in time, it's the only reason the counties didn't bring the suit. didn't bring the suit. The two individuals involved have been involved in this territorial sea planning process for years, and I believe one's a city councillor currently. They've been involved as advisory committee members to the Ocean Policy Advisory Committee, and they're also involved in the Oregon Coastal Zone Management Association, which has been following this process, which is where I think their initiative for filing the suit came from. Basically, what the state did was they ran through a large process that involved local input on doing land use planning of the sea adjacent to county lands, and the counties were specifically assigned two seats on that advisory committee to supply their input, and then turned around and ignored the input of those and wrote their own rules. And this is a local control issue. It's the state needs to advise and have the consent of the counties that they're impacting with zoning the sea, because we're zoning the land adjacent to that sea. And if they're going to zone an area for wave generation and have a bunch of buoys or windmills offshore, we shouldn't be protecting the views of that area. It'd be a mismatch in our zoning. There has to be an advisory role and a coordination role between the state and the counties. And filing this amicus brief is just basically saying, we believe that role's been violated, and we believe that we need to go back and follow the rules and have the advice and consent of the counties in zoning the sea. That's as simple as that, and at almost no cost. So, if you're voting against this, you're voting against coordinated zoning between the state and the counties relative to the use of the sea adjacent to our land uses on the shoreline. So, I can't understand how anyone could vote against this amicus brief.
Chair Bolesovich, I want to thank you for reminding me of that. I mean, Mr. Belmont was very candid that but for these two individuals, this would have been, that the county, I think he was-
We would have missed our opportunity.
Yeah, I think he said they missed the vote. It just went by, and then it was only when they filed their lawsuit that he realized that the counties had a role. And so, this is really the only way that they can participate in the process is, and have their voices heard, is in the form of an amicus brief.
And it is. If we join, it will be all seven coastal Oregon counties that will be filing this brief.
And I think Mr. Belmont apologized profusely for overlooking us until, I think it was the Douglas, one of the Southern Commissioners pointed out and asked why Lain County wasn't on the brief, and he said he just forgot.
Yeah, and anytime you can have, say, the Douglas County Commission voting to do the same thing as the Lincoln County Commission, I think it's a pretty broad, global, you know, agreeable initiative. So, there's no further discussion in the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Sorenson in opposition. Moving on to item B. We've got a few more minutes here. In the matter of approving amendments to extend the contract for law enforcement activities on BLM lands and authorizing the county administrator to sign amended contract and future exercise options. This is Order 1509-2211.
Good morning, Chair Bolesovich and Commissioners. I have with me today Police Services Lieutenant Chris Doyle. The item this morning is Order 1509-2211. It's an amendment to the BLM contract, which was originally signed in 2013. It's for law enforcement on BLM lands in Lain County. In 2014, the BLM extended the contract through September 30th of this year and added a 1.0 FTE deputy sheriff. Today's amendment will extend the contract for an additional 12 months and continue the funding for the deputy. The BLM lists all anticipated amendments to the contract as options, which I've attached to the back of the amendment in your packet. We expect the BLM to exercise these options, but it's their responsibility to initiate the process. I was notified late last week of their intention to continue with the law enforcement services and deputy funding. In order for the BLM to have sufficient time to obligate these funds, they have asked to receive a signed amendment from Lain County by this Thursday. So, I'm requesting approval.
Any questions for staff?
Not a one or two in motion. Commissioner Stewart?
I have an approval of Order 15-09-22-11 on the matter of approving an amendment to extend the contract for law enforcement activities on BLM lands.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion in the motion? I just want to say, this is a great partnership with the BLM. You know, every time that I've ran into the supervisor for the BLM, Eugene Poffes, they're just very thankful that they're able to have this relationship and the importance of our ability to, you know, do law enforcement on their lands. So, I want to thank you for bringing this forward and making sure that it gets to continue. Any other discussion in the motion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And I think we've got time to deal with item C also. Public Works, Order 1509-2212 in the matter of amending option agreement for the sale of Lain County property to the Friends of Beaufort Park in Mount Pisgah. And it looks like we have Mr. Chaney here.
Chair Bolesovich, Commissioners, I'm here because Dan Hurley isn't here. What you have before you is in the manner of a housekeeping measure. This is regarding the Turtle Class property that a year and a half ago, the Board agreed to sell to the Friends of Beaufort Park in Mount Pisgah for the purposes of restoring the fish habitat there. The reason this amendment came is before you is because the money for this transaction is being provided by the Bonneville Power Administration. BPA has a fund set aside to acquire properties for restoration to compensate for the habitat loss that, in past BPA activities. However, that fund will only pay the current assessed value of the property. And so, as the value of the property and, even though the property hasn't changed and property values in Eugene, Springfield haven't changed, the value of the property, according to the original appraiser, with current adjustments, has, is not what it was based on similar sales in the Lain County area. In this case, this property transaction is expected to close within the next week. And in the ordinary course of events, it might not even be necessary to make this adjustment. However, by selling this property, we're selling it to the Friends of Beaufort Park in Mount Pisgah for the purposes of public use, open area, and habitat restoration. And as we are doing that, we're keeping a reversionary interest in the property, saying that if they ever don't do that, we get the property back. And at some point in the distant future, they will have the right to, to, once they have performed a habitat restoration, it's going to have a perpetual easement for its uses then. At that time, they can apply to have that reversionary interest removed. And I want to make sure that this transaction, 20, 30 years down the road, if they go to do that, none of us sitting here today will be at that, will be around then. And I want to make sure that every i is dotted and every t is crossed so that that, so that this, so we don't wind up with a confusing property transaction at that time.
Any questions for staff? Seeing and hearing none. Do I hear a motion? Commissioner Stewart? Mr. Chair, I have an approval of Order 15-09-22-12 on the matter of amending the option agreement for the sale of Lain County property to the Friends of Beaufort Park in Mount Pisgah.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion in the motion? Commissioner Sorenson.
Thank you very much. This is a great day that Lain County is making this transfer to Friends of Beaufort Park in Mount Pisgah. This site has been, you know, site of some controversy over the years, and I think it's wonderful that our solid waste people are initiating this and that the transfer is being made. And I think a lot of hard work has gone into this, not only on our solid waste and waste management division, but Lain County Legal Council, certainly our Parks and Parks Division, and of course, the board, staff, and volunteers at Friends of Beaufort Park in Mount Pisgah, and the Bonneville Power Administration that's providing the funding.
Commissioner Farrar?
Thank you. I think the great day indeed was March 11th, 2014, when we approved this sale over a year ago. And I guess we're just doing due diligence to get all the ducks in line. It's a 63-acre site, I understand, and it's just near the confluence of the Coast Fork and the Middle Fork of the Willamette River. Pretty valuable property. Formerly had been, some of it, I think it formerly been gravel pit. And it's all, I'm looking at it, looking at it from the air right now. It really is valuable resource land. And it's, Commissioner Sorenson is right. This is a continuation of the great days that have happened since March 14th, that Friends of Mount Pisgah and Beaufort Park are going to be handling this for the future. And, you know, you say we're not going to be here when it comes to fruition, or when it, I guess when it comes to fruition, but we'll be here in the meantime and then enjoy it and invite people to really enjoy that part of Lain County. It really is a valuable asset that this transaction is going to maintain for perpetuity. Thank you.
There's no further discussion on the motion. Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we are going to jump ahead in our agenda to County Administration, Item 7B, Order 1509-2209 in the matter of approving transfer of $50,000 from contingency to materials and services with general expenses, special revenue fund 260, approving allocating $50,000 to Regional Accelerator and Innovation Network, RAIN, to be distributed over two years, and authorizing staff to pay the terms, and the county administrator to sign necessary agreements and contracts. And we have Sarah Case here, and I shall introduce the rest of the folks.
I will. Just give me one moment to pull up this.
Good action.
Did I mess it up?
One of the phone controls.
Uh-oh. Where's the tech guy?
Now, here come the kibitzers. Maybe you can introduce everybody while your kibitzers are working on getting that.
Okay, so, sorry for the technical difficulties. Clearly, I'm not a tech person. Today, we have with us Jim Coonan and Carolyn Cummins, both from RAIN. And here comes Diana to save me.
Queen for Diana.
So, real briefly, I'll just go ahead and discuss, introduce the matter. This is the first of two requests that you're going to see from Economic Development today. Okay, good. The first is a request from RAIN. I think all of you are pretty well aware of RAIN and the great work that they do, both here in Eugene and up in Corvallis through their Regional Accelerator and Innovation Network. Thank you, Diana. But what you might not know is that in their programming, they have a very specific and dedicated effort to reach out to rural communities in their service area, and that includes Lain County. So, we received a proposal from Jim and Carolyn not that long ago, speaking to that and requesting support to expand those services to rural Lain County in the amount of total of $50,000. And we're looking at splitting that $25,000 over the next two program years, fiscal years for us. So, with that, I think that we broke it again? That's all right. We can just speak to the slides. With that, I'm going to have both Jim and Carolyn introduce both RAIN and the rural outreach program to you, as they can speak on it much more eloquently than I can, and I'll be available for questions.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Chair, my name's Jim Coonan. I'm the Executive Director for RAIN, Regional Accelerator and Innovation Network. We're a 501(c)(3) dedicated to support entrepreneurial activity in a four-county region, Lincoln, Linton, Lynn, and Lain. And really, we are a collaboration between higher education, government, and the private sector. We were incorporated a little over a year ago in May of 2014, and since that time, we've launched accelerators. Think about postgraduate school for entrepreneurs. One of those in Eugene and the other one in Corvallis. We've also, with your support, have been able to gift building at 942 Olive that will be the permanent home for RAIN, which will house not only our accelerator, but several assets from University of Oregon. In fact, the first time University of Oregon will have moved a physical asset directly on to our, into downtown. So, it'd be kind of this unique meeting place. Right now, it's scheduled to be refurbished by April of next year, right downtown, 942 Olive. We think there's just going to be a lot of excitement, not only the accelerator, but as I mentioned, several capabilities from the universities to help entrepreneurs. We've also had exceeded our funding match. We funded through the legislature. They gave us a buck, and they said equivalent, you have to raise a buck, and we exceeded that by 25%. And we've also supported locally FERTY Lab, which is really focused on the early-stage ecosystem for entrepreneurs. And they've opened up a startup center in Springfield. In fact, tonight is an event called The Big Mix on the 138 Main Street at the Think U Bater. Great opportunity for entrepreneurs. Sold out, by the way. It's going to have over 100 people. Hopefully, the fire marshal is going to be cool with that. But we've got a ton of entrepreneurs showing up, and really, the objective is helping them to get to know each other and identify resources in the community to help their companies. So, we're very excited about our progress. I won't bore you with all the other things, but I think we've done a lot in a little over a year. One of our key initiatives was hiring of Caroline Cumming. She's our venture catalyst, and she has two major priorities. She'll go in more depth, but basically, her job is to do outreach for the entire region of RAIN. And second, and really co-responsibility of helping entrepreneurs. We think of this as sort of like a large watershed. So, interesting ideas can come from anywhere in the RAIN region, whether it's Eugene or Corvallis, or Lebanon, or Cottage Grove, wherever it might be. Talking about our key initiatives for the next BIM 1517, looking to move into primitive homes for accelerators in both Corvallis and Eugene. As I mentioned, 942 Olive, we expect to be open next spring. We have, we'll be launching a seed venture fund. One of, another one of our priorities is to have more resident capital focused on these early-stage companies. So, we're going to be launching a seed venture fund early part of 2016. We're developing a resource database for entrepreneurs, and Caroline's also taking that initiative where we're collecting mentors, whether, wherever they come from the region, and matching those up with entrepreneurs to help with their development. And finally, one of our major goals is outreach. So, getting beyond Corvallis, you know, RAIN's more than Corvallis and Eugene. I'm spending, and well, actually, we're both spending a lot of time on the road, wherever that might be. Particularly, we have a specific outreach effort for the coast. But I won't take all of her points. I'll turn it over to Caroline, and she can tell you a little bit about herself and what are the things she's working on.
Thanks, Jim. And good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us today. Entrepreneurship is a big passion of mine. I'm also a tech entrepreneur. I've started two tech companies here in Eugene. The first one failed miserably. The second one I sold. But I did get to raise a million dollar in angel capital, which I was told had never been done before in Eugene by women, which was pretty cool. So, the initiative for RAIN is super important. I'm preaching to the choir when I tell you guys that entrepreneurs are the job creators. If you look at Kaufman Foundation Research, which is nationally recognized, it says that firms under the age of five years old create most of the net job growth in America. And I believe that's true here in Lain County as well. And as Jim mentioned, I do serve Lain, Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln Counties, but I live here in Eugene. And in just nine weeks that I've been in this position, I've met with 42 entrepreneurs. And they have come to me because the RAIN brand is so strong. And most of those entrepreneurs have been Eugene, Springfield, Corvallis. I'm now doing more outreach in Florence and Cottage Grove. And with your help, we'll be able to reach more entrepreneurs in the rural areas of Lain County. So, we've also been doing a lot of partnerships with other organizations. We can't do this on our own. We can't do this on our own. So, meeting with Travel Lane County, for example, and we've put a marketing committee together to focus on how moving to Lane County is a great place if you want to start a company, particularly around technology, life sciences, and product-based businesses. We actually have begun the outreach already in rural Lane County, and we need more help. For example, entrepreneurs start to come out of the woodwork. That's what happens with people like us. We're not typically joiners. You know, we don't necessarily join chambers and join different groups, but we do if people have resources there to pull us out. So in Cottage Grove, we've identified two entrepreneurs already. We've been to the coast, to Florence, working with the city manager, Aaron Reynolds there, with the chamber president, Cal, with Russ, who leads the community college, the Lane Community College. And we're going to host two coffee meetups there coming up in October and November, as well as a call of interest meeting, which really, that's when you start to see these, I like to call them the crazy people because they're good crazy. It takes crazy to start things, right? Think about all the businesses that get started and are successful and create jobs. So by doing this call of interest meeting, we're going to pull these inventors, these innovators, these entrepreneurs out and support them. The other research at Kaufman shows that if you actually wrap services around an entrepreneur, it literally does take a community to raise an entrepreneur, just like it takes a community to raise a child. And the research shows if you wrap services around them, the chances of them being successful increase by 80%. So resources, like they come to me, they need capital, they need loans, they need office space, lab space, to hire talent, they need marketing talent, mentors. So one of the, the final things I want to mention that we're launching is this mentor database that will be instrumental to rural entrepreneurs and innovators. Anyone will be able to sign up as, if you're an entrepreneur, if you have an idea, and say, "I need help with how to start. I don't know how to get a permit. I don't know how to hire my first person." So we're going to have that database launched by Thanksgiving. We're also going to seed it with a bunch of mentors, people who've already sold companies, a lot of high-net worth people who want to invest in these companies locally, because we're not like the Silicon Valley. We don't have venture capital. We need to grow our own. So between Jim and I and the rest of the RAIN region, we have several hundred high-net worth accredited investors who want to invest in these rural companies. So hopefully, with your support, we'll be able to kick up that and launch that even bigger and come back and report to you all the cool things and jobs and companies that we're creating in Lane County.
So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions from the commissioners.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And before I touch on Jim and Carolyn, and first of all, thank you both for being, for being here this morning. So based on Carolyn's comments here, and Sarah, this is a question for you, and obviously with Glenda in the background, but, so maybe talk about how, is there a potential where our revolving loan fund can come into play, especially if you're talking about some of the entrepreneurs that are being mentioned in rural Lane County? Is there an opportunity where that revolves? Because I, I think one of the biggest challenges, and I think Caroline said it right, you have people with big ideas that have a challenging time getting the capital. First of all, banks aren't going to loan, and, you know, they want, they want stability first before they go down that road. But with our revolving loan fund and the, maybe some abilities that we have, could this play into maybe some potential that Caroline's talking about, especially regarding rural Lane County?
Sure. So, um, as a reminder to all the commissioners, Lane County recently partnered with ElCog to seed a revolving loan fund, and it's a million-dollar revolving loan fund. We matched a $500,000 grant from the Economic Development Administration, and ElCog is administering that program for us. And several loans have been made out of that, out of that loan fund currently. I will note that a percentage, and I believe it's somewhere around the 30, 35% range, was specifically allocated for rural companies. We wanted to make sure that was a focus of this revolving loan fund. So to your point, Commissioner Lichen, I believe it can and should play a role in all of this. We consider that a gap financing tool, as you know. And so it would be part of a cafeteria of options that we could present to rural companies for assistance and think that it would be well worth, you know, certainly our time and their time to consider that. There's a variety of different options that we would also be able to pull from, from other partner organizations, but definitely, it's certainly on our mind to make sure that the, our revolving loan fund is an opportunity for folks in the community.
So, and a follow-up on that, is Steve, is Steve or is Dan, who's managing the, the, from, from ElCog's perspective?
Steve is.
Okay. I would just send, maybe at the end, when we, when we ask for, uh, maybe things to come back for the board, I think it'd be interesting just to get an update on where we are with the revolving loan fund and see if Steve can maybe come over and just talk about it from, from his perspective as well. He's been involved in SBA lending for as long as I can remember, and so it's good to have him involved there. Uh, and, and real quickly, I just want to say, first of all, to Jim and Caroline, I've had the opportunity to kind of be, be on the, behind the scenes on this, on, on working through this, and I just want folks to understand just how lucky we are to have Caroline, Caroline involved in this position. I think it's, uh, I think it's going to be extremely helpful, not only with her connections, her passion, but really, um, you know, sometimes you hear the fact that we're, you know, Eugene's about University of Oregon, the Ducks obviously are playing, we're on the map there, and when it comes to the high-tech, we're still in such an infancy stage, but yet it's growing and maturing. And, uh, so I just want to say thank you very much, and I'm glad Sabrina was willing to let, let you be in this position. I think it's extremely helpful. And Jim, I just, again, thank you for just, I mean, you're a man that obviously was not going to let this one dissolve or disappear, and it's pretty obvious your passion with RAIN is what we needed to make sure that we have this, this stability statewide. I mean, we have so many good people involved here locally, but you need that one person at the top to keep that vision going. I want to say, Jim, thank you very much for that, and I love the way the team is being built here to really talk about how we can energize this, this entrepreneurship and this high-tech entrepreneurship. Um, you know, I was one many years ago, and, and I got to tell you, it's people with ideas, not necessarily figuring out how to get, it's, they don't know how to get to the capital. They have the ideas. And, uh, so, uh, we talked about earlier from just our remonstrance, boy, if there's a way we can keep our youth right here that have these unbelievable ideas, keep them right here in, in Lane County, to take these ideas to different worlds, how much better off we're going to be. And so, thank you very much for, Jim, your leadership. I'm so happy to have you onboard. Caroline, it's, it's fantastic, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lichen.
Thanks, Sarah, for the question.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And Jim and Carolyn, thank you for, Caroline, thank you for being here today. Um, you know, it seems to me, as I reflect back, it was almost six years ago, I think, when we were summons together with the first regional solutions effort. And through the brainstorming of the group that was, was brought together, really, this idea was hatched of how do we take the help, enter, well, I can't, it's hard to say, anyway, new businesses or ideas become actual businesses employing people in our community, from idea all the way to employment and, and producing a product. And it's been, it's been a long haul, but it's, um, you know, I'm really appreciative of the great work that's been done. As you pointed out earlier in the introduction, it's, um, you know, folks need help in all different areas. And it's, um, one of the key areas that we discussed early on was, um, you know, financing was a huge hurdle. And I'm really pleased, if I heard you correctly, Caroline, you said you've established relationships with over 700 accredited?
About 300.
About 300.
300.
300.
I said several hundred, that's right.
Well, that's still a huge number. That didn't exist probably six years ago to anybody's knowledge, so that's great. I, um, I was curious, one of the ideas that I shared a few years back, I think with Jim was, is, um, you know, we have a lot of charitable foundations that, um, you know, are out investing to make returns. There are some, I think some state laws or federal laws that allow for some incentives to invest in this type of an opportunity because the risk's a little bit higher. Have you been able to forge any relationships that have convinced us to do that?
Yeah, we've gotten really good support. We actually have a number of proposals in, right now, both with state foundations and also with family foundations, um, including, um, the Oregon Community Foundation, Murdoch, Myers Trust, but also some local family foundations. We're talking to the Chambers family, um, we're talking to the Woodard family down in Cottage Grove, several other family foundations. So people seem to be interested. They're looking at this as a little bit like mission investing. They expect a rate of return, but they're also hoping to have some economic development impact. So we're, we're pretty excited about that. I mean, really, we've gotten such incredible support across the board. I also should mention both universities have really stepped up. We like to say that the universities are at the table, they don't own the table, but they've been terrific partners for us. So good support by, um, local community, both governmental and the private sector. But to answer your question specifically, Commissioners Stewart, yeah, we seem to be gaining some traction, uh, and I should also mention, the University of Oregon Foundation has expressed some interest too. So I'm hoping by the second quarter of next year that we will have launched a seed venture fund, uh, which will be particularly important for these very early-stage companies. And we've already selected a fund manager, a guy named Nitton Rye. He runs an organization called TIE, um, very successful serial entrepreneur, um, and we were just meeting with him yesterday, and I, I think we're going to be very successful with that.
And that's a two to $4 million seed fund.
Great. Well, I appreciate, you know, you taking that idea and running with it. The charitable foundations that I'm familiar with, like the Woodards and our family foundation, are really invested in, in improving our community. And so we, we had a long discussion here early this morning from a couple of presenters talking about the conditions of our communities, and the long-term real answer is, is to improve the economy, improve, improve the opportunities, improve the wages so that people can support themselves. And the effort you're doing is, is, I believe, very important in moving that forward. And lastly, I just want to say thank you for including the rural areas. Sometimes we feel like we are left out and struggled, and I really appreciate, you know, us being able to play a part, but also you recognizing that that's an important role for, for you to be involved into, so thank you.
Mr. Storson.
Well, I am so excited about what you guys are doing. To me, this is like a dream come true to see the major research universities in the state, uh, which I'll start with the University of Oregon and Oregon State University, and to see the excitement going on there for the learning, the research, the thinking, the big thinking, but you know what? Thinking alone does not generate money, it does not generate profits, it does not generate jobs, it does not help necessarily initially communities. But the beautiful thing is, within this southern Lamont Valley, where these two research universities are, they attract very, very creative people. And it's not just people that go to the university, it's people that want to live near a university, whether it's in a rural area, uh, like maybe in Monroe halfway between, or whether it is right in Eugene or Corvallis. So to me, this is great that we've got the thinkers involved in this, the researchers. But you guys add that dimension of connecting the entrepreneur, the person that wants to take that idea or an idea, and they want to actually turn it into a profitable business. And to me, we've always had that innovation, we've always had that, those ideas, we've always had the research, we just have not had the money, the capital, to put that together. And to me, this is where we are. Now, a friend of mine, uh, is a, an analyst that works for a angel investment firm in San Jose, California. And one of the things I've learned, and believe me, I don't know anything about this area, but basically, what they're looking for is that 1 in 20 idea. That's about the number they're working on with. That 1 in 20 idea that will in fact be a runaway success. There may be 19 along the way that sound really, really good, and they're putting money into it for a while, but it isn't going to make the real hit. So to me, if we can have that number be 100, then we have five of those. If that number can be 5,000, it can be bigger. If that number can be 10,000, it could be bigger. And to me, the, the usual things we look at in terms of economic development around this table, oh, we've got the ocean, there must be some fish in the ocean, oh, there's land, there must be some farmland, oh, there's forests, there must be some forests. You know, to me, that's not where this is headed. To me, this is, these are ideas that we haven't thought of. Maybe you guys have thought of them, but most of the rest of us have not thought of. And maybe you haven't even thought of them, they're bringing them to you. So to me, it's exciting that we'll be able to be on the cutting edge of this, and we'll be able to see for the public money we put into this, a great return investment. That was one of my first questions to my friend, I said, "Why doesn't government put money into this?" And the answer is, "Well, you know, there's all these restrictions on, on 501(c)(3) money, on foundation money, pension fund money, government money, there's all these restrictions." And that's why the, uh, angel investor funds can often be the main source. So I, I, I'm really excited about this. I, I would also note that the partner agencies or partners that you have in this, besides the universities, besides the city of Eugene and city Corvallis, should include the counties, I know you do, but, um, and by the way, it comes to some pride to me, representing, you know, South Eugene District, that includes Whittaker, that includes downtown Eugene, includes the University of Oregon, that a lot of this activity is going on right here. It's very exciting because it's changing the way people live, it's changing the economy. And, uh, we haven't really had the big hit yet, I don't believe, big enough for me to say, "Oh, that was a big hit." But we've had a lot of entrepreneurial activity that's come through this recession, that despite the fact that we've had this major recession, the worst in my lifetime, the second worst in my 93-year-old mother's lifetime, uh, despite the fact that we've had this major hit on the national economy, we've actually come through. And I say "we" meaning Eugene, South Eugene District, not necessarily my colleagues out in rural Lane County, because the unemployment rate there is very high, the poverty rate's very high, and the ability of getting this kind of entrepreneurial activity is lower. But it's still going to benefit everybody in the southern end of the Lamont Valley. I really appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Just, oh.
I was just going to have one final comment, that it's really nice to hear this amount of support. It's wonderful. The 42 companies that I mentioned that I've been helping, I spend an hour, sometimes two, with them, and I'm helping them with things like their investor pitch, if you've ever seen the Shark Tank show, you know, they're like, "I need to get up and talk to these sharks and figure out what it is that I'm doing with my business." And at the end of each meeting, they're so appreciative, and they say, "Is this really free? Like, do I, I don't have to pay you?" And I said, "No, you can thank your senators and thank your commissioners." And so my goal is that, over time, you'll actually be hearing from these companies who are reaching out and saying, "Thank you for supporting entrepreneurship and innovation because without these resources, it would be really difficult to take the idea out of my head, put it into a thing, and then send it to the market." So thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate your support.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that Oregon as a state is really starting to really get an advantage, because we used to talk about this being a flyover state. Well, now we're becoming a destination state, and it's because of our quality of life. People want to live here, so if we can give them the tools to be successful, not only do their odds of success go up, but they're more likely to stay in our region. And we're looking at the RAIN region as like this large watershed. So good ideas can come from anywhere in that watershed, and a lot of what Caroline's trying to do is be a proponent and a connector for those folks, wherever they might be, and connect them to the resources that they need. The only other comment I'll say is on the university side, you know, part of it is just a different way of thinking. There's a program called Lens of the Market that's now being deployed by both universities, particularly in their chemistry departments. And what it does is it gets the researchers and post-docs to start thinking about how do they transform their pure research into some kind of application? And it's just a different way of thinking about, hey, you're doing a lot of really cool basic research, but is there some kind of end-goal product or service that that perhaps could lead to? And just by doing that, we start to see many more new and interesting kind of companies. So we hope that through our interface with the universities, that we can encourage more of that kind of thinking. So again, thank you for support, and we, we feel pretty excited. We're still a startup, we haven't been around that long, but so far, so good, and I, we're pretty excited about it. Thank you. it. Thank you.
Commissioner Farr. Thank you. Commissioner Storson, another very lively speaker, and it's very difficult to follow that. He's said some very interesting and remarkable things. But I just wanted to point out that you are attracting talent to this area, but more significantly retaining talent in the area. And one step beyond that, the fact that we have the program and that we're able to assist you with it, it attracted you guys to this area. I mean, how good is that? So, I think, you know, the parlaying of the talent into more future talent, you know, the University of Oregon back in 1973 attracted me to this area. And for better or for worse, I stayed, and it attracted my wife to this area, who I met within 15 minutes of my arriving in this area. So, you know, bringing people here and retaining people in this community is essential. And I think, you know, what Sarah and Glenn are doing is, I mean, it's just remarkable that what you're bringing to us. Commissioner Storson earlier held up this sheet, which is our strategic plan. Well, I'll hold up this sheet, which is our community and economic development strategic plan, which goes along with this. And you guys are the symbolic of the heart of our economic plan for the county. People ask me, "What's the county doing?" Well, I can point to you. You know, "What's the county doing?" Well, we're providing seed money for entrepreneurs and for the talented kids who go through our education system, K through 12, in this area to stay here. You know, I'll point out, I can brag about this every now and then. My wife and I, I'm not that talented, you know. However, our kids have four bachelor's degrees, four master's degrees, and two PhDs. So, you know, keeping that kind of education base in this community is important, and what you're doing is entering that for the future. So, thank you very much. Well, one last thing. 942 Olive, due to open in November?
No, it's actually spring. I think originally it was March, and I think it's slipped out to early April now.
And so, we'll look forward to that. And just for anybody watching, that's where Bradford's Hi-Fi used to be, one of Eugene's great companies, which relocated the Delta Oaks and is doing a great job out there, still a part of our community. But right downtown, great location for you guys.
And we'll have a grand opening around that. And of course, you know, building on your point, bottom line is jobs, right? That's if we don't create jobs through our efforts, then we're sort of wasting everyone's time. So, that's our bottom-line metric, or do we create jobs? We went to Albany the other day, and it turned out one of our graduate companies out of the Corvallis Accelerator, called, the company called Valiscor, is opening up their facility in Albany. And suddenly, all the council people, they got it. You know, it was like, "Oh, right. This is how innovation turns into jobs." So, again, thanks.
So, as we conclude, if anybody wants to get a feel for this entrepreneurship and innovation tonight in Springfield at the Ferri Lab on Main Street, as Jim mentioned, it's sold out. There's going to be 100-ish folks there. Companies pitching, talking about their startups and what kind of resources they need. So, if you have time to come out tonight even for a little bit, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Can you say the time again?
Uh, is it six?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yes.
Unfortunately, I have to be in Junction City at a work session of their city council, so I'll be missing that. So, rather than spend a lot of time singing the praises and what a great idea it is to have, helping entrepreneurs out, you know, it's why I got involved in LCC a long time ago, was their Small Business Center, and trying to make small businesses successful, and talking about that and how it relates to helping our homeless situation through economic development, keeping growing jobs here versus recruiting them and all that great stuff. Let's get down to what you're asking for, which is you're asking for $50,000 out of a fairly small fund that Lain County controls. So, I have a couple of questions. First of all, what is the total budget of rain annually right now? Second, how much did the legislature allocate to you in this last legislative session?
Right. So, we got $2 million of funding from the legislature. The vast majority of that goes to support the two accelerators. We had this outreach and Caroline's efforts in that regard earmarked, and my board said, "Go ahead and hire her, and we'll raise the capital for her position," and now is efforts, the outreach efforts, to the rural community. And so, they asked us to be entrepreneurial about it. We've raised about two-thirds of that, and I'm very optimistic that we'll be able to fulfill that.
Okay. So, you didn't quite answer the question about what your total annual budget is.
$2 million is what we get from the legislature. We have a target of one-to-one match. So, optimally, we'll have a total of $4 million to work with. Again, the vast majority of that goes to support the two accelerators, one in Corvallis, one in Eugene.
So, have any of the other three counties contributed video lottery funding to the accelerators?
Yeah, we've gotten support from Benton County has contributed. We've also gotten the support from, that's the one county. The other cities have included Eugene, Springfield, and Corvallis. We're also talking to Lincoln County and also to Lynn County for support as well.
Okay. So, I have a couple of questions for Sarah. What is our current balance in our video lottery funds right now?
Let me get that for you.
Okay.
Currently, the budgeted contingency fund, which is what we would pull this from, is at $47,890. Plus, we've budgeted an additional $200,000 for this year. So, at the end of this fiscal year with this request, this would leave a balance of $197,890.
So, and that's over the two years of the payout?
Yeah. Keep in mind that this is a two-year payout.
Yeah. So, you know, what I'm kind of getting at here is we're looking at an agency that has approximately somewhere between a two and a $4 million budget, and the request is for 50,000 out of what is currently about 250,000 of county funds. So, 20% of our county funds for what is a very small percentage of their annual budget. And this is a fund, and the Commissioner's aware of this, that we use for really tactical and critical investments. This is the fund we hold in reserve for when we get, you know, the Appel Extrusions that wants to stay in Lain County, that we can actually buy them the 480 electric service into their site that stays there, but that's what we use that fund for. You know, this is the fund that kept, you know, all sorts of various companies in Lain County, and it's our critical use fund. So, one of the things I'm concerned about is we're going to be drawing this fund down to support what seems like a fairly well-supported agency, that I'm only hearing one other county, and Benton County is probably in the best fiscal shape of the four counties involved. You know, they've got the lowest unemployment, and, you know, because they're such a small county, they're not as timber-dependent as we are on federal forest funds. They're not dealing with budget issues we are. Is this a wise use of that video lottery money? To spend it down by that much to support, you know, we got a second request we're going to be hearing right after this, that's for a local rural company that's paying living wage jobs that at the same time protects a drinking water source for over, you know, several thousand people. You know, that's the kind of, you know, what kind of investments are we making? Are we going to put $50,000 into something that's already being well-funded by the legislature, or do we save that 50,000 and look for another opportunity later? And that's what's really in front of the board, not how wonderful rain is, which I think we can all agree on praising rain, is what's the best use of that video lottery money strategically? And I am not convinced this is the absolute best use.
Sure. Well, I mean, clearly, Chair Bozovic, that's a policy discussion that you all need to have. I would just add that, you know, Commissioner Farr brought up our strategic plan, and I think there are certainly valid arguments to show that this is part of our strategic plan, and so you would not be out of line awarding this fund based on that direction that we've been given. But clearly, this is a policy-level discussion and decision that the board needs to make in terms of, you know, this is the fund that the board has discretion over. So, how it is spent is ultimately up to you all.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Commissioner Farr. Thank you. You know, anytime we invest money, just like a business, like a private business, we have to consider what is the return on the investment? And for me, when I analyze the $50,000, relatively small investment, particularly in light of the entire budget that you, the $4 million, hopefully $4 million budget that you have to work with, a small investment, but it really does leverage a great deal of both support from Lain County and the businesses in Lain County, but it also leverages public interest and public involvement in the organization. I believe that spending $50,000, which in terms of your budget is a small amount, I believe we're going to get a great return on that investment. I believe that once you open at 942 Olive Street in the heart, just, I'm not, Sid, you could probably hit a golf ball there from here, but I couldn't. But, you know, it's so close to the heart of everything, and once again, the return on the investment to me is the key here. And I believe, sincerely believe, that the return on investment is going to be magnificent, is going to be tenfold, exponential. So, thank you very much, and I am in support of this.
Well, I hope, as you consider this, two things. One, you know, we, this is a specific outreach to the rural communities, and so we really think that we can, we think entrepreneurs are really the seed corn of economic development, and this effort is specifically focused on that effort. The other thing is, when the legislature did give us that money, they said, "Hey, you know, part of our ongoing support is to see how does the local community step up? Does the local community think this is important?" So, as much as anything, we can use your dollars to leverage other dollars. The more dollars we get from the local community, the stronger arguments that we make, both to the private sector and the public sector. So, obviously, your call, but I hope you'll join us.
Yeah. And I would add to that, that I do think $50,000 is a small amount, knowing that you do have a small pool that we're pulling this from. But to address the return on investment question, and I appreciate Commissioner Farr bringing that up, that's the world we live in. When I'm talking to investors and companies, it's all about ROI. They're not going to give money unless I can return something to them, or at least speak the language of return on investment. So, the return on investment here would allow me to do more outreach in, you know, Junction City. There's a couple entrepreneurs that I'm told that want to meet with me there. Monroe, there's a distillery that wants to meet with me there. I can get out there. I can spend more time with them. I can make that a priority. And then it does send the message to the folks in Lain County that the Commissioners value this, that they are putting $50,000 to this, because I can guarantee you, the return is going to be wonderful. I mean, we are measuring job creation, top-line revenue that these companies create, and also investment capital that they raise. Those are numbers that we will report back to you, so you will get a sense of what the return on the investment is. I don't want these entrepreneurs and these innovators in these rural communities to feel like, "Oh, it's just Eugene and Springfield who's getting the help." That's not what we want them to think. Great ideas do come from anywhere, and there are great ideas in those rural communities. So, I really hope that that is a consideration for the $50,000.
Commissioner Stewart. Thanks, Mr. Chair. And, you know, to be honest, when I first saw this piece, I thought to myself, gosh, you know, as Commissioner Bozovic pointed out, you know, we have limited dollars. We tried to be really strategic. But as I learned about, you know, the requests and what the direction's going to be, and then also being a part of this process at a, you know, early stage and gotten to follow it along to where we are today, you know, I really want to make this investment. And then I'm hoping that you'll be back in a year or two and be able to say, "Hey, this is what we created. This is the number of jobs that we created. This is the number of people." And, you know, this is focused on rural, and I can't tell you how desperately this is needed in rural Lain County. I mean, our Economic Development Department, Glenda and Sarah and folks, they work really hard, but we need some additional help. We need to be able to bring the expertise that's focused solely on this area of what we can bring in and help the folks be able to take the next step or develop a technology and bring it to the marketplace to generate jobs. That's what we need. I appreciate, Jim, that that's what you said. If you're not creating jobs, this effort's not going to go very far. So...
Yeah. Commissioner Bozovic, and also Commissioners Stewart, and the whole board, you know, one of the things that we propose is that you tranch this to us. Give us, you know, give us the 25K. Have us come back next year and let us prove to you what we've done with our, with the funds. I mean, we're all about accountability. We're not, we don't want to take your money and not have impact. I'm an old enough guy. I get to do stuff that I like to do, and I really believe in this thing. So, we can arrange it. We'll come back next year, and you can judge for yourself whether you think we're making impact.
So, with that, I'd like to move approval of Order 15-9-22-09 in the matter of approving the transfer of 50,000 from contingency to materials and services within general expense special revenue fund 260, approving allocating 50,000 to the regional accelerator and Innovation Network, i.e. rain.
Second. It's been moved in second at discussion of the motion. Commissioner Liken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is something I'll be supporting and supporting very strongly. I just strongly believe that this is also about investing in human capital, and I think sometimes we, sometimes we forget about this. And I believe this is a small amount of dollars that's being invested here. As I stated before, I think, you know, having the opportunity to sit down face-to-face with Caroline on this, I think with Joe here locally, who's running the local rain operation as well, but I think sitting down with Caroline and really understanding what her role will be, I think what we have here is an individual who's very talented and who has, as she stated in her background, and she's been fairly humble about it, which is, I think what you'll find is that she has a pretty incredible grasp of this, something that we haven't necessarily had here locally in this area. And really finding out those individuals out there in rural Lain County that are just itching, just to, I have an idea here that I think will be a positive for our community, whether it's to create jobs, whether it's to find some sort of innovation, so that a major manufacturing company can bring that into their company, all of a sudden, that creates thousands of jobs. I think that's really what we're looking at here. And so, this is why I strongly support this, why I believe it will be overall a good investment for Lain County. And I just want to mention real quickly about Ferri Lab. We, that was $30,000 in Lain County invested. We have a sold-out program tonight with 100 folks who are looking to bring out ideas about entrepreneurship through our, for our community. Pretty small investment, and I think you're going to see Shula and the gang continue to bring that effort into this area, so we can really magnify and see these, especially old, young, whatever the case may be, really seeing that investment pay off. So, appreciate the comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I'll just note real quickly, even though I've asked some tough questions, I'm planning on supporting the motion based on the fact that we will kind of get that progress reporting, and the proof will be in the pudding. But I just wanted to point out to folks that might think that Lain County is making a small investment in rain, and we're not really all that invested, I wanted them to understand how big of a piece of this particular pie this is. It's a very large piece that we're investing of a very limited amount of funds we have available for economic development. I believe it is an investment in our future. And being a small business owner located in rural Lain County, besides my job here, my wife and I own a small business, I understand that need for that outreach to the rural communities, and that there are entrepreneurs out there waiting with good ideas, and we need to reach out to them. So, I'll be supporting the motion. Commissioner Storson.
Thank you very much. Well, I think this is an opportunity for us. I think that anytime you spend money, anytime the government spends money, I like to think of it as, "How would I spend my money?" And I like to personalize it as, "Is this a good enough expenditure that I would put my own money in it?" And I think that this is a good investment. I think that to have people try ideas out, and most of them fail, but that the few that survive could become businesses and could be employing people and could give us as a region independence, but I think even looking broader, to take a good idea from Oregon State or the University of Oregon and from a distant-from-my-life science, and turn that idea into something that would help people way beyond the southern Lamont Valley, even way beyond people doing a job, getting paid for, paying income taxes, hopefully buying a home, paying property taxes, independent of our role in government to provide that, which is hard enough. But independent of that, wouldn't it be great if we had some great idea that would actually help the human race that would come out of this valley? I think it's phenomenal. So, it's not just the obvious thing, which is I hope that these businesses result not only in profitable businesses, but also employment-based businesses, businesses that employ people. And that isn't always the goal of the entrepreneur. It isn't always the goal of the entrepreneur to provide a lot of jobs.
It isn't always the goal of the entrepreneur, to provide a lot of jobs. In fact, providing too many jobs might reduce the profitability of the business. So, i- it's something that has to be handled with care. But I think our goal up here is to make sure that we get a, a good return on this investment. I, I define that as gaining some successes here, and I think we'll get that. And I'm optimistic, and I'm in favor of what you're doing, and I hope that, that the energy that you see in our community, in terms of Eugene, and Lane County, and Corvallis, and Benton County, and what are your other regions, your other communities or counties?
Lane, Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln.
Lane, Lynn, Benton?
And Lincoln.
Lincoln.
And Lincoln, okay. So, you know, there's a lot of energy out there, and particularly for, for, you know, Lane County and its orientation to the U of O, and Oregon State, and its orientation to, to Newport, and Corvallis, and, and Albany, I think it's really, it's really great. I think you're well positioned for it, and I hope that our funding does help. Thank you.
Chair Bozovic, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, staff has clearly heard that they're want, that, that the board does want a report back. We build in reporting functions into the agreements that we have with all of these awards that are provided, but I will make sure to coordinate with both Jim and Caroline to make sure that there is a report back to the board in about June of next year, before we enter in the new fiscal year.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So, we have a short bit of time here, to our eleven o'clock time certain, so I think I'd like to try and deal with item seven, see if we can, because there are people in the audience waiting for that also. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And we'll move on to order fifteen-oh-nine-twenty-two-ten in the matter of approving transfer of forty thousand dollars from contingency to materials and services within general expense special revenue fund two sixty, approving allocation of forty thousand dollars to Gary Folio, I'm going to say it wrong, I know it, Folio Trucking Company, Inc., for the purpose of rebuilding the wash rack filtration one reclamation system that prevents runoff from entering Wohink Lake, which provides drinking water to the Dune City area residents. And again, we have Sarah Case with our Economic Development Department, if you'll introduce your guest, please.
Thank you, yes. So, the second of two requests today coming you, coming to you from Economic Development. I have here with me today Gary Folio and Bill McCoy of Folio Trucking. As you mentioned, Chair Bozovic, Folio Trucking is a rural business located outside of Florence, here in Lane County, who, they specialize in serving the wood products and transportation industries. We are viewing this as a job retention project. They currently employ thirty-five local employees with annual wages in the range of fifty thousand dollars, and they also provide a very generous benefits package added on to that. Recently, a proposal was submitted to staff, Economic Development staff, indicating this job retention opportunity amid looming environmental issues. Commissioner Bozovic, you mentioned the wash rack, and there are some compliance issues with DEQ around that, and, and in order to become compliant with the DEQ issues, it's going to cost around forty thousand dollars. I believe our guests here today will be able to further explain not only the company, but the proposal that is in front of you today around the, the compliance issue. So, I'll go ahead and turn it over to them for that.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to listen to our request. Just briefly, we've been in Florence since the late sixties. Primarily, we were a log hauling company, and then when the recession hit us in the eighties, we were forced to diversify to keep our employees busy. In the Florence area, there's a limited resource of workers to draw from, so if we can't keep our employees busy, we're going to lose them, and then when we do need them, it's hard to replace. So, we diversified. Currently, we haul sand, gravel, asphalt, lumber, building products, we move heavy equipment, and we also have a drop box service for large containers for construction or residential projects. And we have this water filtration reclaim system to help meet DEQ specs, where I sample our stormwater runoff four times a year and send it to a lab, and then those results get sent to the DEQ. As all our runoff from our property does run into Wohink Lake, which is a drinking source for Dune City and most everybody that lives around Wohink Lake. So, we're, we want to be good stewards, and a good example for our area. We do try to do the best job we can. The hospital and school district are the biggest employers in Florence, and we have a lot of service industry there. We provide family-based wages for our employees, and I enjoy what I'm doing. I've been around equipment and trucks since I was in diapers, and have a son that's active in the business too, so we plan on being there for a long time. And we just need to upgrade our system to take, stay compliant with what we do.
Thank you. Bill, do you have anything you want to add?
Well, I just want to make it aware that this is, isn't the whole cost of this, but this is a large majority of the cost. Gary will still have to add some money to this, and he, I've known Gary for thirty-five years, and I've, I know that all of his employees, he's had, he's got so many employees that have been there since the late seventies and eighties, they just don't leave. And so, he's, he's the best trucking company in western Lane County, as far as a real trucking company. There's other loggers that have trucks, but, but he has kept these guys busy by, like he said, moving them around from log truck to construction, whatever it takes to keep them busy and to keep them there, and he, he does a great job of providing benefits for them and everything. And with all this, this coming down from the state for mandates as far as sick leave and stuff, it's going to put more burden on him for, you know, keeping compliant with the regulations for this. And so, that's why we, we thought we could ask for this money, and to, to help keep this ship sailing as it is and has been.
So, just to maybe bring this back to the Community Economic, Economic Development Strategic Plan, that's been referenced a few times here, there's a couple of ways that this does tie in. Clearly, this is a job retention effort. It's also an infrastructure effort, and, you know, in, in trying to make sure that there's adequate infrastructure nearby and surrounding drinking water source. But it's also, you know, yet again, we're talking about rural Lane County, and, and clearly rural Lane County is a focus for us as it, as it pertains to economic development. So, it ties in several ways, and just wanted to make that more prominent in the discussion.
Two. Questions for staff?
Well, first, I want to say, Gary, that, you know, anyone that, that can manage a trucking company and put up with ODOT's paperwork, I, I commend. And for the, anyone that's never been involved in trucking, they have no idea what it takes to, to keep the paperwork up on a trucking company. Second, I just want to, you know, note, you know, that, that the, the staff report mentions there's thirteen-hundred-and-twenty-one residents depend on the drinking water source. What it doesn't note is the transient population that depends on that drinking water source. Many of the, the eight-hundred-plus homes that are around Wohink and Silkus Lake that depend on those for drinking water are rental properties that generate transient room tax for the county, and also generate tourism dollars for, for Lane County, and bring dollars in there. This drinking water source is, is probably one of our most threatened in Lane County, as it, it was a lake that was so traditionally clear and beautiful that people drink out of it unfiltered, which is kind of a, is something most people wouldn't think of. But recently, they've had issues with, you know, blooming algae blooms and other issues, so trying to keep this drinking water source pristine is really important for this segment of Lane County. And understanding how impoverished some of this area is, you just have to look at the statistics for free and reduced lunches in the two school systems over there. Mapleton School District is seventy-eight percent free and reduced lunch rate, Siuslaw School District sixty percent. I mean, those are really high rates of, of poverty. Thirty-five jobs that pay fifty thousand with full benefits would be devastating to lose in that section of Lane County. It doesn't sound like a lot for all of us that are here from Eugene and Springfield, it, you know, it just seems like a drop in the bucket. But when you get over there, where there's only about twelve thousand people total, it really has a big impact. So, I really appreciate you keeping a business open through a recession, through hard times that were no fault of your own, changes in federal regulations on, on endangered species that have hurt your business, changes in regulations on everything from clean diesel rules to, you know, various other rules relative to, to, you know, how long your drivers can drive, and keep track of all those log books and everything else. So, I appreciate that you've managed to keep a family-owned business viable in rural Lane County. And I know you mentioned Florence, but what I want to also mention to people is you're not really in the city of Florence. You guys are actually located across the bridge in Ada, in, in rural, unincorporated Lane County. So, I really appreciate your efforts. So, if there's, no other further questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Stewart. Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of order fifteen-nine-twenty-two-ten in the matter of approving the transfer of forty thousand dollars from contingency to materials and services within general expenses. Fund two sixty, approving the allocation of forty thousand to Gary Folio Trucking, Inc., for the purpose of rebuilding a wash rack filtration reclamation system that prevents runoff, runoff from entering Wohink Lake.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
So, with that, we'll move on to our other time certain, we're only about one minute late, which is a work session and status report on the OSU Extension Program in Lane County. I believe we've got John Punches here from OSU, and.
Rose Johnson-Sullivan.
Okay, I'll, I'll let John introduce you. And a lot of interested parties in the audience.
Good afternoon, and thank you for spending some time with us. It's been a while since I've had the privilege of presenting some of our accomplishments here in Lane County, we wanted to do that, and then share some of our funding challenges. I'm sure that you're familiar with getting those types of requests. For those in the audience, if there are people who don't already have a copy of the two documents that were part of the agenda handouts, we have some, some printed copies that are available, and so I'll just have one of my staff members run up and grab those, if anybody needs those, we've got those extra copies available. You should have them already, I believe, but if you'd like paper copies, we can get those to you as well. There's two documents that, one is the funding proposal, and the other is the program status update. We really are viewing this, hopefully as an opportunity, one to bring you up to date, and also to start a conversation about some longer-term funding needs, and, and hopefully we can have an opportunity to think about how we can work collectively to address that. So, not a, not particularly a day when we're asking for money per se, but an opportunity to think about how we can move forward. So, as you're probably well aware, Oregon State University is the land-grant university within the state of Oregon, and it comes with some specific missions from doing that. So, land-grant universities were established in the eighteen-sixties as a way to extend education beyond kind of the cloistered halls of, of the places where people who were wealthy could attain their degrees. And so, a land-grant university has always had a mission to reach out to the people, and OSU considers all of Oregon to be its campus, and we work very hard to provide practical education throughout the state. To a large extent, we do our off-campus education through Extension Service. So, I work for Extension Service, as does Rose, and, and we have many of our volunteers in the room here today. We've been functioning, Extension Service has been functioning in Lane County since nineteen-eleven, and for most of that time period, we did that in a collaborative funding arrangement with state, federal, and county dollars, providing the mix that allowed our programs and services to be functional here. That was diminished in about twenty-ten, when the, the county, under financial constraints from various timber-related issues and other things, found it could no longer contribute directly. And so, at that time, lacking those local support dollars, our programs and services here dramatically declined. The amount of services that we could provide were just not as high as they had been in the past. And reality is that up until that point, OSU's policy had always been that if a county doesn't provide local support dollars to match the state and federal dollars it is, it has access to, it didn't continue doing programming for that county. The fact that we're still here, functioning in Lane County, is a testament to the many volunteers that work in our programs. They simply weren't willing to give up and see the programs and services that they offer go away. So, it started with a minor revolt among our master gardeners, who said, we're going to do everything we can to provide funding and keep that program going. There's quite a few master gardeners in the room today, and they're a powerful force here in Lane County, they do tremendous work. And, and really, master gardeners have been some, a group of people that not only started the process of getting OSU to rethink how it allocates its resources, but also have really consistently made it possible for us to be here. The other group that has really stood by and made sure that their services didn't decline are our master food preservers. They're, they're the ones that offer food safety and food preservation classes throughout the county, and annually, staff in conjunction with Douglas County, a hotline that answers thousands of calls from people who are undertaking food preservation activities. And our long-term history says that over sixty percent of those people who call are about to do something that could make them sick or die, and so it's, it's a pretty serious issue there. So, we provide those types of services through those two programs, and those groups have been very instrumental in keeping our programs going here in Lane County, not only by continuing to do their educational activities, but by fundraising, by providing their volunteer time to, to provide the sort of direct service activities it takes to run our educational programs. In twenty-ten-ish, we lost our forestry program, which seems kind of out of character for Lane County, which is consistently either number one or number two in timber production in the state. It's a distinction that switches back and forth with Douglas County. And so, this is a place that if, if any place needs an extension forester to do outreach in our communities and work with family forest line owners, certainly is one that justifies that. We also lost our 4H Youth Development Program at the time, we've been slowly rebuilding that with some private funding sources, and our, our agriculture programs were scaled back quite dramatically at the time. So, we've been working for the last several years in order to build and stabilize the programs that we have been able to maintain. I'd like to first just give you kind of an update on that. So, I mentioned that in twenty-ten-ish in that area, era, we lost our 4H Youth Development Program. That's one that reaches out and does some very special things with young people. The 4H Program is built around the idea that for kids to truly be successful, they need to develop responsibility and leadership skills, and that that comes through having projects that take time, and having recurring interactions with adults that serve more in mentor roles rather than in direct educational roles. And we know from studies done nationwide, that kids who spend time in 4H, particularly ones who, who stick with it through their high school years, are far more likely to finish high school than their non-4H peers. The research shows that they're far less likely to engage in risky behaviors, and there's a whole bunch of different types of things that fall into that category, we can provide more specific information if desired. And they're far more likely to attend college, and they have, over their lifespan, a much greater engagement with their communities. So, their, their civic-mindedness increases through their activities in 4H. So, that was a, a difficult program for us to see lost here in Lane County. When I was transferred to provide leadership for Lane County, I believe it was in twenty-eleven, we started right away looking at what we could do to rejuvenate that program. And through the, very generous support from the folks that own Coastal Farm and Ranch, we were able to get that program going again, in a scaled-back version, but to, to restart the, the actual activities there. So, we now are proud to say that we have ten active community clubs, and that within those community clubs, youth have not only opportunities to do one type of project, but they can do many types of projects. And that integrated approach with a whole team of adult volunteers working as mentors has proven very successful. I mean, our last year, our youth contributed over eleven-hundred hours of community services, service to the programs they're working in, and our adults contributed over seventy-five-hundred hours of volunteer times doing educational activities. Right now, that program is self-funded and pretty close to break even in the format that we have, so we're very proud of the, the attempts we've made there to, to rebuild that. But it's still relatively small, it's two-hundred-and-thirty kids right now, sixty-four adult leaders. My estimate is that we should be able to grow that to about three thousand kids in Lane County. I think that's where it should be. And to do that, we really need to spend more time working in schools. It's hard to use a hundred-dollar-per-student fee to do school-based programs, it's just, it doesn't- It just doesn't fit there. So one of our long-term challenges is to be able to reengage and do our school-based program that traditionally is the way that we recruit kids and families into 4H and get that lasting commitment. Our master gardener program, as I mentioned, is one of the larger in the state. We have 355 volunteers. Last year, they contributed over 11,000 volunteer hours doing various educational activities here in the county, and their focus is around the types of questions that home gardeners and home landscape people have. And so there's not really a lot of other places to go for that. People can go to Jerry's or Home Depot and ask the garden shops there, but for the types of disease identification, for programs to work on waste reduction and composting, to work on integrated pest management that helps reduce the overuse of pesticides that's so prevalent really among urban residents. We often think of pesticides as being a rural thing, but it really, most of the abuse of that, the overuse, is an urban thing. Our master gardeners are kind of a frontline and help people adopt better management practices within all of our properties, regardless of where they're located. We do part of that through direct community classes. We had over 80 community classes offered through our staff and through our gardeners, master gardeners, last year. In addition, we do various outreach efforts through the county fairs, through the home shows, things of that nature. We had 19 of those activities last year, and lots of emphasis, as I mentioned, on composting, pruning, pesticide reduction, water use efficiency, accessible gardening for people who have limitations in their mobility. We have a big program that works, and I think is doing some of the leading work with that in the state among our master gardener programs and providing accessibility. If you want to see some of the examples, swing by the Kaufman House, just not too far away over on Jefferson Street, and you can see some of the examples that we've developed for ways to improve accessible gardening. We staff a hotline through our office, and in the last year, we had over 1,600 calls come in around specific issues related to gardening. Our master food preserver program, that's about 50 volunteers that contributed over 5,000 hours. As you can see, that's a very active group. They were part of a group that answered over 3,000 calls last year. Again, I mentioned that over 60% of those are food safety. Actually, last year, it was 67% were food safety-related issues. They also are the place in the community to be able to get pressure canner gauges tested. Maybe it doesn't sound like a big deal, but if your canner doesn't can at the proper pressure, your food probably isn't safe to eat, and there's not really a way to look at that jar and know. And so we think this is a pretty important process. We had 26 community classes in addition to all the other outreach programs that we did there. So those, I think, are three programs that are really going very well and are moving forward with as much emphasis as we can do in a self-funded manner. Not fully self-sustaining at this point, but we're hoping to grow it towards that. Our pantry program is one that was started by, I believe, Nellie. Didn't you start that year, Seagull? So Nellie Ayler is here. She's been with us for many years as our food safety expert. And Nellie found that food pantries locally were having food product come to them that people just didn't know how to use. And that's become more and more prevalent in today's culture where everything is prepackaged, pre-made. Nobody knows what to do with dry beans and often when they come to the... And they certainly don't know what to do with a 55-gallon drum of pumpkin puree. So our job, Nellie's job and others, is to find easy-to-use recipes that use those common products that are coming in and actually coordinate with the pantries. And so we currently now have 44 volunteers. Last year, they contributed about 1,500 hours of volunteer time, and they're working all 24 of the Food for Lane County Emergency Food Pantries to help develop and then demonstrate those recipes in those different pantries. We have, we're lucky to have, fortunate to have, a very significant nutrition education program. Rose formally oversaw that. It's now been turned over to someone else. She works on a state basis to coordinate nutrition education, but she's still in our office. Through that, we reach students through hubs and reach out. Currently, we're working with Hill Elementary and Cascade School in the Bethel School District, and we kind of rotate over time to take nutrition education programs into those schools. That's a program that's funded by a combination of federal grants. So we just provide a hosting place for it, and then the federal grants provide the actual funds to keep that program going. So it costs us very little to accomplish those things in Lane County. A real challenge is that we're facing, and this will lead into a request unfortunately, a real challenge is that even though we've been able to do some amazing things over the last couple of years in order to provide a local funding mechanism through donations, through fees for services, things of that nature, we're still not breaking even, and we're at the point now where we're going to say we're going to have to reduce some of our accessible hours. We're going to have to not have as many hours open in our office if we don't find a way to backfill a little bit of funding there. And in addition, there's some things that we're really kind of on the verge of not being able to provide, and I'm concerned about these two next things. So one is forestry. We haven't had a forester in our office since 2010, and again, recognize that this is one of the top timber-producing counties in the state. We have an opportunity right now to restore an Extension Forestry program to Lane County, and all we need to really do is come up with the local support cost, to provide secretarial support, office space, computer connections, that kind of stuff. So it's very low investment in that particular position. The funding was allocated through the last state legislative session, and OSU is actually stepping forward in faith and saying, "We're going to put that person back in Lane County and hope that you, Punches, can come up with funding to keep it supported locally." So I'd really like to be able to put that position here and keep that position here. We do have to provide that local level of funding, and that will give us a full-time Extension forester to operate out of our office, to work with commercial and family forestland owners to help address those questions and hopefully be able to help people be more effective in managing lands with timber. Now, that has a direct income relationship for the county because if we're producing timber, that's a big, significant piece of our economic base here in the county. So that's the good news piece. The bad news piece is that the person who's been doing our commercial agriculture activities in Lane County for many years, Ross Ben Halligan, has retired. He's on a half-time stipend appointment now through the end of our fiscal year, so June of 2016. At that point, he's probably going to actually retire. He is the person that is answering hundreds, literally hundreds and hundreds, of commercial ag producer calls every month, not per year, every month. He's responding to the hazelnut industry calls, all of the different fruit producers, field crop producers, you name it. He gets those types of questions because his expertise is broad, and he works in all types of plant diagnostics and weed management, integrated pest management, works with us to help integrate pest management activities. And so that's a very important position here. The statistics from the last ag census say that we have almost 220,000 acres in ag land here. That's 2,600 farms, individual farms, about $142 million in agricultural products. That was the 2010 number, the last time that the census was done, primarily around hazelnuts, tree fruits, and small fruits. And we really have been, through our office, the place that people went to get that sort of pest management and disease management services. Lacking local support, when Ross's position, when he went into retirement, the university had to look very strategically at where it put limited resources in our ag program. At the time that Ross retired, there were 40 agriculture positions within the Extension Service that were vacant, and so they couldn't just automatically refill this. And so unfortunately for us locally, they chose to refill the commercial ag position for tree fruits and nuts, but they didn't put it here. They put it in Aurora. It's logical. It's connected with the Ag Research Station that's up there at the North Willamette Research Center. But that means that for our commercial producers, who are reaching out and needing someone to come and say, "What is this disease? What's happening with these particular fruit crops?", that person is going to have to come from Aurora, and they're serving a broad area. I don't know about you, but I'm not real convinced that Lane County is going to see anywhere near the level of service that Ross has been able to provide as a local agent providing those services. So I would like you to consider, and this is just the first step hopefully in this conversation, I would like you to consider referring to the May 2016 ballot, a measure to provide a small amount of funding to provide that local support. It has traditionally been a component of what helps Extension do its work in communities. Again, that's a relationship that we had for 99 years, either through general fund dollars, or there were a number of times in the past where serial levies were used to provide the income stream that you needed to offset that income that would then be passed on to Extension. I've done the math. This was last attempted in 2010, and it was unsuccessful at that time. At the time, the request was for five cents per $1,000 of assessed value. So most cities are in more like a $5 per thousand of assessed range. At the time, we were asking for five cents. But the reality was, it was more money than Extension had ever received. It would have resulted in about $1.2 million in locally generated revenue, and it didn't fly. It didn't pass. I've done the math, and I think that we can provide funding to stabilize our core programs, to enhance our outreach through 4H into schools, to ensure that we can recruit and retain the state-funded forestry position, and to fund through this mechanism a locally stationed faculty member to do commercial agriculture. And I think we can do that for 1.5 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. So that would be my kind of initially, initial opening request here. I'd like to do that as a local option tax over a five-year period, and then that gives residents the opportunity to reconsider that and to see if they want to continue making that investment. I'm absolutely confident that we can do the work and have the impact that will secure that as it goes forward into the future. I'd like to have this be dedicated, obviously, to Extension programs so that you can know we're going to use that for the specific things here in Lane County. We're doing this in part because we're convinced it's the right thing to do, but we do have some backing for this. In 2012, I received a grant and worked with the, with University of Oregon, not Oregon State, University of Oregon, through their community planning workshop. I'm hoping you're familiar with their services. They do tremendous work for cities and counties around community planning activities, and they're very good at needs assessment. And so we contracted with them, and they did a needs assessment for us. And when I worked with them, I specifically asked them not to contact our existing clientele because our existing clientele are going to tell us that we need to keep doing the same things that we've been doing. It's just logical. So I said, "Don't do that. Work with the other organizations that provide services to Lane County residents and have them tell you what the niche is that Extension should be filling." I thought they might come back and tell us to do something different. The reality was, they came back and said, "These other agencies count on Extension to do commercial and community horticulture, to run a master gardener program, to answer gardening questions, to do food safety and food preservation, to have that volunteer program, to do the type of youth development that 4H does and really nobody else does in that manner, to do the forestry programs and to have the outreach with woodland owners." And so it came back, and they said, "We need you to fill the things you've been doing because the network of service providers within the county relies on Extension to fill those components so that they don't have to." And there wasn't a push to have us do new things because there's other organizations doing those other things. So we really do have a niche, and in their words, they said that the type of intentional education program that has an emphasis on positive behavior is still highly relevant in Lane County. And so that's out of the report that they published. We have that posted on our website if anybody's interested. So we would like to engage you in an ongoing conversation, the goal of answering whatever questions you have, building whatever budget detail you might need in order to make this decision, and then hopefully getting your support to have a referral from you. This would be something that you would do as the county to generate an income stream that you could then use to help support these Extension programs in Lane County. The details of that on the back of the proposal sheet, and again, it's 1.5 cents is what we're proposing for $1,000 of assessed value. That would mean that a person with a $200,000 assessed value, that's reasonably typical for homeowners in the area, that would be $3 per year. So it's not a big individual investment. My estimate, after my adjustments for compression and tax collection rates, is that that would generate about $400,000 per year, and that really would provide all those things that we talked about, the commercial ag position, the stabilization of our core staffing, the provision of youth programs in schools, and really be able to develop that program that allows us to get back to the point where we can provide 4H, master gardeners, master food preservers, food pantry, maintain our nutrition program, recruit an Extension forester, maintain him there, rebuild the master woodland manager program, which is the volunteer program associated with that, support a commercial agriculture person directly to do ag activities in Lane County, and then really to address some of the other things that are in that needs assessment. But the core pieces are what I've described there. So again, this is something that we're just wanting to initiate the discussion. I'm sure you're going to have lots of questions, and I'm very eager to answer those. We'd just like to kind of start by opening and asking what questions you have, and then if I can't answer them today, I'll make sure we can put together some additional briefing information so that we cover those bases.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John, thank you very much for the presentation, and I want to thank for many of the folks coming out here today that obviously you can see in the badges. For those of you wearing orange and black, you're very brave. So my brother was an Oregon State grad, so that's okay. So was my father. It's all good. John, the question I have for you right immediately is on the commercial ag piece. And I've actually asked Sarah Case and Glenda Pulling from our Economic Development Department to be here as well to kind of listen into this. So Sarah is actually really our stone point person here on the ag industry in Lane County, and she has significant relationships here locally, but I think statewide. Have you had an opportunity to sit down with Sarah to talk about this piece?
No, I haven't.
So Sarah, do you mind coming up to the table real quickly? Because my question would be for you, have you had interaction with OSU Extension on the commercial ag industry in the past? Or what's your relationship there? And I guess my question would also be, do you believe that maybe the folks in the business here, because we do have a strong agricultural industry here in Lane County, would they be interested in maybe potentially partnering with the Oregon State Extension?
Sure. So my current relationship with OSU is primarily with the center out of Portland, the Food Innovation Center, yeah, Food Innovation Center, and I believe, are they part of Extension?
So the Food Innovation Center is part of the College of Ag Sciences, and they have some Extension people and some non-Extension people.
Yeah, it's busy. Yeah. So, you know, yes, most of my relationships, both locally and statewide, are sort of the next phase in that supply chain. It's really the processors. That being said, we do think of the food industry as a supply chain, and it's, you know, Oregon grows somewhere in the realm of 230 or 250 distinct crops agriculturally. And so, you know, it's very important, not only from an economic development point of view, that not only are we supporting the processors that are adding some value-added components to the agricultural industry, but it's very important as a statewide brand that we also maintain the high-quality products that are being produced in the state of Oregon, not only from an internal sort of processing perspective, you know, in that we have high-quality product to get to our processors, who are really providing those high-wage jobs and value-added products to then export out of Oregon, but also, you know, Oregon is known nationally and internationally for their raw products. Hazelnut's playing a very high-level role in that, you know. So whatever, from an industry perspective, I think that I wouldn't be out of line by saying, "These sorts of services that you're talking about would be important to maintain from an industry perspective."
So my thought on this, on this particular piece, on the commercial ag side of it, I would highly recommend, John, if you could set up some time to meet with Sarah and Glenda Pulling, their director of our Economic Development Department, and just... just maybe talk about some of these potential partnerships involved here. Because I think there's some, there's some added value by having Oregon, OSU Extension being a part of this as well. And because this has been an ongoing, I mean, I believe Lane County situated itself very strongly in this industry. So I would recommend that the two of you may, and along with, with Ms. Polling, get together and maybe talk about what kind of partnerships are out there, so that maybe this could be a position that maybe the industry would be interested in working with you, as well as, as obviously the, I think, the Board of Commissioners. And, and real quickly, I just want to touch on the fact, I was a 4H kid growing up, and I got to tell you, now, it was in Douglas County. And there's, there's a difference between Lane County and Douglas County. I think Douglas County today still has a very
Yeah.
...strong 4H program. And I will tell you, it, it taught me so much in the responsibility aspect. When you're 12 and 13 years old, it's, it's a really good avenue to go through and have to be responsible for cattle, sheep, horses, you name it. I mean, we had a nice little ranch down in Douglas County for years, and so it taught me a lot. I would be interested, maybe offline, maybe talking to you a little bit more about the 4H program, and just potentially see what, what other avenues we could bring to the table. So I would be interested. So let's, you and I, maybe get together and talk about that, just, and I, as an individual commissioner, maybe there's some, some things that we can add to that as well.
Just to add sort of another layer to, to that conversation, Commissioner Liken, you know, for, back in 2010, we participated in a market analysis, I think you all have heard of it, the Lane County Local Food Market Analysis. And in that document, we identified the average age of the Lane County farmer to be somewhere in the 57 or 58 years of age range. That's problematic, in that
I agree.
...those folks are really not wanting to continue to farm a ranch for much longer.
They're pretty much dead when you think
Retirement years.
It's hard work.
I was trying to be very diplomatic, Commissioner. But the, the point being, we are lacking in our ability to attract the younger generation, and we do that very well through programs like 4H. And so, getting those younger kids exposed, I'm a 4H kid in Douglas County as well, and so getting those kids exposed to this industry is very, very important, and 4H is a really great avenue to do that, so.
Well, we're not the Midwest. We're not growing corn and soybean for other things besides food.
Right.
And getting a big check from the government, and working your 60 days, and having your home in Florida. So I mean, that's the generational side of farming in the Midwest. I mean, I, I, it's stunning to see, but you have corn and soybean being grown, and it's not for food production. It's for everything else but food. Dog food, fuel, you name it. And so, I appreciate that, that piece. So that's questions I have. Thank you, Sarah. And again, thank you, John, for the presentation. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Farr, I'm going to put myself in the queue, and then Commissioner Sorensen. Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. You know, I was a 4H kid growing up too, but because in Tillamook County, you had to be. I think it was a part of the charter of the county that kids are, 4H, and those who were so inclined, Future Farmers of America. You know, on Thursdays, if you didn't have your blue jacket with the golden emblem on it, boy, you were not a part of the gang. So, you know, I, I just wanted to touch bases with the partnership element of things. You know, I, I don't know how many people fully understand how deeply in partnership you are in the community. And I like the way you talk, John, because you mentioned the places that I've worked, the places that I've spent most of my adult and part of my childhood working. I, you know, you talked about Jerry's, you talked about the Foodfulane County, you mentioned Bethel School District, all are in partnership in many ways with, with your master gardener program, and, and with the Extension Service in general. You know, at Jerry's, when we started the garden center so many years ago, and there were about 12 of us working there, you know, we relied on master gardeners. Maybe some of them are in the room today to tell us how, what we needed to sell, because we weren't looking at selling pansies, we were looking at selling crops, things for people to grow in their own gardens. And it's, you know, you, you talk about 50% of the callers are calling about something that's going to kill them if they're not careful. How, how big is that? So, you know, at Foodfulane County, when I was the director there, we had, one of your staff was right in the building, we got at one time, seven tons of dried powdered black beans. What do you do with seven tons of dry powdered black beans? So we had, you guys, you guys developed recipes for us, and I was eating dried powdered black bean muffins. It tasted great.
We, we still have some in the freezer, if you'd like.
I don't, I don't want any more, by the way. But, I have my fill. But the, you know, the, and you talk about the 24 pantries, the emergency pantries throughout the county, that they, they receive the food, and a lot of times, families get it, they used to just get it in a box, now they get to choose what they, what they, what they are going to take home. But they get it, and if you don't know what to do with it, even though it's highly nutritious, even though it's, it can taste very, very good, you're not going to use it. It's going to end up either in a, in a corner of the parking lot, or it's going to go into the dumpster. And because of OSU, and because of the Extension Service at Foodfulane County, we were able to tell people how to, how to use food that otherwise, they wouldn't have, have no clue how to use. You know, an abundance of growing vegetables, we'd get lots and lots and lots of kale. Well, most people don't know what to do with kale, but if you do know what to do with kale, oh my goodness. You know, so, you know, they, we relied on you. Lady at the time, her name was Noi Rathakiet, I remember it very well, and if Noi's listening right now, God bless you, because she wrote a recipe book based upon the hard, the stuff that we got. We got truckloads of powdered milk. You know, what are you going to do with truckloads of powdered milk? And you guys told us what to do with truckloads of powdered milk, and we were able to do it. So the partnerships that you guys have forged in the community are worth a penny and a half. You know, I mean, it's, you're worth a lot more than a penny and a half. So when it comes time for me to talk about how do we fund the Extension Service, I'm on the street. I'm with you on it. My, my garbage can, pardon the use of the poster that I have, but on my garbage can upstairs, it says, "Support OSU Extension." You can, I might even see it through the window, it says it right there. And, and I will, and I do. I do have a quick question, though.
Sure.
Recently, Commissioner Stewart's on our fair board, and he's been with the fair board for a lot of years, and recently, we changed the date of the fair, the Lane County Fair, in part to make it easier for 4H kids to participate in, in the fair. Has that been of any assistance so far? You said you have the 230 or so kids right now.
So we're, we're still re-establishing our relationships with the fairgrounds, and let me just do a little shout-out for the folks at the fairgrounds. They've been magnificent to work with. We've really appreciated the fair board response to the restart of the 4H program, and the fair staff has been fantastic to work with. And yes, I do think it's, it's positive. It previously had been late enough in the year that it was difficult for youth who were showing at the Lane County Fair to then get their, their projects transported in time to show at state fair. And so, the, the move has been positive in that respect. The, the challenge is that it now coincides with several other county fairs, and so it's a little bit more challenging to find judges to do the, the project areas within 4H, because there's a certain number of them, and I, I at one time had, just in the region that I oversee, we had four county fairs that were all in that same week. And so, it makes it a little bit challenging. But there's only a certain number of weeks out of the year when you can do county fair, and so, I was impressed, that, that happened right when I first came here, and I was very impressed that there was a fair staff and a fair board that was sufficiently concerned about it, that they would actually change tradition in order to make that change.
And I think it's been good, you know, getting creative in how we make, make it work for kids. And, you know, in Tillamook County, the highlight of the year was taking your stuff to the county fair, and getting a, you know, whatever color ribbon that you might happen to get, and every kid was a part of it, and I'm excited to see that. Commissioner Stewart's finding innovative ways to, to help 4H with the judges, and this year, he suggested that we use a county weighmaster to, to actually weigh the livestock at the fair. So, you know, there are ways we can do it, and, you know, by, by staying with it and making it happen. I'd love to see 3,000, more than 3,000 kids involved in 4H at the fair. To me, as a fairgoer, that's one of the highlights, is seeing what kids are doing. You know, what kids are doing with, with livestock, with, with growing products, and I'm just excited for the future there too. So I call out to Commissioner Stewart, I sit in the back row of the fair board meetings sometimes, and he's the one that's always saying, "Well, can we use a weighmaster? Can we do this? Can we do that? Let's change the date." You know, so it's, thanks for being here today. And once again, a penny and a half, I've got a nickel in my pocket right now, so. Thank you. Thank you.
So I'm, I have a, I could spend quite a bit of time, you know, singing the praises of Extension and all that. I'll just note that I attended a land-grant university, University of Maryland, and my actual degree was in agricultural engineering, and have worked for agencies that were Extension agencies in the state of Maryland. And that my father-in-law was the master of the state grange for the state of Delaware. And in that position, sat on the University of Delaware's board, because that is also a land-grant college. So I, I appreciate the role of Extension Service, but what you're really here to talk to us about is a funding issue.
Yes, yes.
And, you know, really, the history of why Lane County, you know, decoupled and stopped funding Extension, you know, goes a long ways back. And if you think about, and if you're inflation and justice, our road fund and general fund, at one time, in the 70s, got $115 million in today's dollars a year from the federal government from timber harvests. That dropped to about $60 million in the 80s, and in the last five years, it's been less than $10 million a year. So, from the 70s to today, we've lost over $100 million in annual funding in federal forest monies. That's why we're here today, to talk about
Definitely.
...why, why we're even in this situation. And because of that, we have to think about what we're going to prioritize our fundraising efforts on. And as I look at state land-grant colleges and Extension Services that are a function of being a state land-grant college, who is really responsible for that? Is that a primary responsibility of counties to supply that funding, or is it a primary responsibility the state that chartered the land-grant college? And that's a question I'd like to kind of have an answer of, because I, you know, that's, I don't know the founding of the, of the land-grant college, even though I went to one, I couldn't tell you exactly who that responsibility is. I do know one of their charters is to go beyond their campus and extend their education over the whole state, and particularly to the ag industry. And that's, you know, but who is responsible for funding that, in, in that original charter? Was that the state, or was that supposed to be the state and the counties? That's a good, so that's a question for you to come back and answer later. I, I, I note in your, your materials, you say a penny and a half won't create compression. I'm aware that we currently have compression in the South Lane Fire District, just with our 55 cent. Sheriff's levy created it. So I know there are areas of the county that, no matter what, it, it could be a tenth of a cent, it's part of compression right now.
So, so let me just clarify that the reason I phrase it that way is, with a local option tax, it is the first to be compressed? And so, if I add a local option tax, my understanding of tax code is that on properties that are under compression, those property owners simply won't pay this tax. So it shouldn't impact the other
And the South Lane District has a local option levy that we caused, create, we caused compression with our local option levy.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so an additional local option levy will create compression of other local option levies.
Okay.
So I want to, I want to clarify that this is not completely without impact, you know, if we make a decision to move forward with this. And as I look at something that's going to raise $400,000 a year, that's approximately what it would take to rebuild a felony prosecution team in our, our district attorney's office. And we gave up about $4 million in biennial funding this last cycle from the state, because we have lost our ability to put people in post-prison supervision compared to the rest of the state. We went from, we used to have 10% of the state's population to 8%, and that difference in the percentages cost us about $4 million in the state budget this last year. So do I invest 400, do I go out for a penny and a half for a prosecution team and try and build back some of that, that lost money? To, you know, that's what I have to look at in this decision, is, is where's, where's this all fall? And I guess probably a final question I'd like to put to you is, is, does this have to be the county that refers this? Could it be done by citizen initiative? The county referred the last 5-cent levy, and it failed. Would it be stronger to come out as citizen, and is there a mechanism for doing that? I, I'm not sure whether there is a mechanism, whether it has to be the county or not, or whether it can be a citizen-led initiative, because I think you may come from a stronger place if it's a citizen-led.
Okay.
You know, we failed with that levy. We were successful with the jail levy, but we failed with the vehicle registration fee. I don't know if you want to hitch your trailer to our, our truck right now. But, you know, so, so, you know, exploring that idea, whether it has to be a county referral, and I'd like to understand it. So I guess a couple of questions are buried in there.
Sure.
But, but the actual initiating legislation of land-grant colleges, and understanding that relationship of who's actually responsible for that funding.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's great the counties have taken over some of that for the state, but if it's really a state responsibility, maybe we need to have a longer discussion and sale in this February.
Yeah.
So, those are a couple of my questions, you know, focusing on what you're coming to talk to us about, which is really, you know, sustainable funding for the Extension Service. I don't think there's anyone on this board that's going to argue that the Extension Service is not beneficial to our citizens. You know, it's just how we fund it, what it's in competition with. You know, as we're thinking about future levies ourselves, is this going to create vote fatigue?
Right.
Understand, we have to, we have to put it in all that perspective.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Thank you very much. I kind of came to Extension through a fairly odd means. I was working as an assistant to the Secretary of Agriculture in Washington, DC, and one of the agencies that I was assigned to learn about was the Extension Service. Now, the Extension Service at the national level isn't the same Extension Service at the local level. And to answer one of the questions that was asked, when the Congress set up the land-grant university system that required that each state have a designated land-grant university, and in Oregon, that's Oregon State University, that the federal government would provide funding for education, for research, and for extension, on the condition, in the case of Extension, that there will be a tripartite, equal funding mechanism. There will be the federal component, there will be the state component, and there would be the local component. So that's generally thought of as federal, state, and county.
Right.
And that's the way our program functioned in Lane County for almost 100 years. So there's a very significant connection between counties and Extension all over the United States, not just here. The second thing I'll say is that, that the county, Lane County currently benefits from the fact that when the voters passed an Extension Levy, and then the state voters, the local voters, passed an Extension Levy in the 90s, that that levy was folded into the permanent tax base, that the state voters, when they voted in Measure 5, and 47, and 50, that solidified our overall permanent Lane County tax base. So there can be an argument that it's the Extension Levy that drove up the base Lane County levy. Now, be that as it may, we're now where we are, and the question is, what are we going to do? I would like to know, and this is by way of, you know, invitation, that we should have another work session on this, but it should be focused more on the, on the logistics of the ballot measure. And that is, we need the assessor here to talk about this compression issue, because if you go with the amount that you're proposing, we need to know ahead of time, so we can answer the questions, of what's the effect on other existing measures that have been passed in the county?
Yeah.
And the effect on any jurisdictions that have, have a measure or tax base that's affected. So we do need to know that. Our, our Extension, excuse me, our assessor can provide that kind of information if we give him some assumptions, like the amount you've done.
Sure.
The other thing I think is very exciting is that in August, we had a, a meeting of the Association of Oregon Counties, and I had a breakout with several commissioners who were from counties where they had already been successful this year.
Yeah.
So one thing that might lower the fear level about putting out a measure, is to actually hear that in some counties, they went out for both law enforcement or jail measures at the same time that they went out for Extension measures. And those Extension measures were passed. Now, I don't know if all of them were passed, but most of them were passed by voters in Marion County, Clack, Clamath County, and other counties that, to greater and lesser extent, or like ours, where there's funding problems, where there's need for different measures. So one thing you could do, and I, you know, I hate to say, "Oh, here's the guy that's going to get to do more things," but it looks like you're taking that role. going to get to do more things, but it looks like you're taking that role, is what counties had Extension measures? What were the amounts?
Sure.
And what were the outcomes? And what else was on the ballot competing at the same time? I know in the case of the Clamath, that they turned down their jail levy and passed their Extension Levy. The jail levy was more money, and the Extension Levy was less money. And I think maybe people felt that they would vote for one and not the other. My point is that the Board of Commissioners and the public at large will benefit from knowing that Extension has weathered this very tough recession and all the decisions that individuals and nonprofits and corporations and businesses and government have had to make. And you've come out still providing these very essential services and really enriching thousands, if not millions, of lives throughout the country, or at least in our own community. So, to me, it's very exciting that we have an opportunity, an upswing, to provide some funding. And as far as the timing, since the city managers of Eugene and Springfield and the county administrator, Mr. Mokhaiske, they meet periodically in a meeting that is called the SEL meeting. S for Springfield, E for Eugene, L for Lane County. I used to think, well, gee, that's kind of like a, kind of a sinister sounding thing, going to the SEL meeting. No, it's SEL. So, I would think that this could be a good topic for an upcoming SEL meeting because, and I don't know if they invite the people in to talk about it, or they just discuss it, but I think the timing is what I'm getting at, is that they like to kind of coordinate the timing of when Eugene, Springfield, and Lane County are going to the public with measures. And so I'd like to know, and again, if you can find this out, we'd like to know, what else is going to be on that ballot? Because we want to see what's competing with it. I remain a strong supporter of Extension. I supported the measure that you alluded to in 2010. I thought it was a good idea then. I still think it's a good idea. This is much more reduced in size, and I think it also comes at a time when we see other communities stepping forward and saying they would support relatively small amounts of money going dedicated to Extension. On the topic of whether this should be something the Board approves, or whether it's something that's initiated, I think that the amount of labor and work that would take to get a measure passed would best be spent on getting the public aware that the measure is in front of voters, that there's hundreds if not thousands of people that are in favor of it, rather than the time it would take to get the Board of Commissioners to place it on the ballot. The Board of Commissioners in placing it on the ballot is not saying you have to vote for it. Clearly, we've had many, many ballot measures, we've referred to the public, that they've said no. So they're very comfortable saying no, if they want to. And I think it'd be better to spend whatever resources Extension and its large volunteer family has to spend telling the public that this is worth their five-year investment.
Thanks. So, can I just ask a quick follow-up question? So, I have all of the data about what Extension measures have passed. I have it all the way back to when the first ones were done, and their passing rates and all that kind of stuff. I don't have the data on what other things were on those ballots. So how far would you like me to go back?
How about as much time as you think is reasonable? I would just say that, you know, the most recent ones, the ones in the spring of 2015, are the ones that are going to be most valuable. And I think there's only, what, four or five counties that had measures on? Were there four counties?
So, we've had, so just recently, last five years, I think that there's been four counties that have done these processes, not for local option taxes, but for permanent districts, so permanent tax rates associated with a district. And so I can certainly dig up that information and see if I can pull out of the records, the.
In the spring of 2015, just a few months ago, wasn't it that those were all five-year operating levies, or were those districts?
So we had one in, I believe it was Marion County, and the other in Clamath County. Those are both permanent districts.
Okay.
Marion County has, I believe, a 5-cent rate, and Clamath County had something like a 23-cent rate.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got the specifics, I'll be happy to get those for you.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. John, I want to thank you for coordinating with staff and having this presentation today. And I want to thank the citizens that are here, that's been here for an hour and a half. This is an important topic to many people. And this is a topic that I, you know, when I first became a commissioner, we were funding an OSU Extension. And then we had to reduce the funding, and we gave in kind through rent. And then the rent piece wouldn't qualify for the match, and there, I mean, it's just been a real downer. And, you know, John, you came and visited me a month and a half ago or so, and I was really impressed with the programs that you've been able to get back going, and the services that you're providing. And so I encouraged him to give a presentation, because we used to have a regular presentation from the Extension. So, thank you for going through some good detail on what's going on, the number of volunteers. It really amazes me, the number of people that are involved in the organization and the county that you do. And this is not a topic that is just specifically rural. I mean, I've, once again, been, you know, eyes open to the number of people that live within the urban area, that, you know, that maybe they grew up and were raised on a farm, and got to be around animals, and guess what? They're renting some stall space, or they're renting, you know, space to be able to raise some animals, to be in the forage program, or involved with their community gardens to support other folks. So, this, you know, really is an entire county issue. I support what Commissioner Sorenson said, let's have a work session. I also support, and I know that we've talked about this years ago, about, you know, could specific industries, whether it's the farming, ag, help support the, through contributions? I believe it was tried and done for a little while with the forester, but it seems like that was, that was a tough one, in an area that has some pretty strong forestry, timber industry presence. You know, it was, it was kind of difficult to see Mr. Bowers have to go do something else, because we couldn't keep him here locally. So, those are challenging conversations, but I think we should have them and look for all opportunities. And, you know, I'm also aware in other counties, as you just stated, that a lot of folks, extensions have created permanent districts, and so they've received the support. So I guess the question would be to me, if, you know, the Board chooses to say, okay, we want to put this to a vote again, should it be permanent? Should it just be a bond measure that has a, you know, a specific amount of time? You know, it's going to take a lot more time than what we've got remaining here this morning to really talk about the basics. So I understand the importance, and would like to find a way so that you can be stronger in supporting your volunteers and supporting the citizens in Lane County. And whether you're answering a question about how to can goods, or, you know, what should I add to my soil so I can be most productive, or, and whether it's animals or whatever, you have a key role that we, I personally like to see enhanced in this community. So, but finding the right mechanism that the citizens want to support, you know, my first role as a commissioner is to support the services that we provide, and that's where I tend to put most of my energy. But this is definitely a service I know citizens use, so how can we help you be successful too?
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the Board? Well, it sounds like when we get to our agenda team request, we'll be talking about additional work sessions, so I'm sure we're going to be continuing this conversation. I appreciate you all coming to inform us on the services you provide, and then also talking about your funding needs. And I'm sure this will be a much longer conversation at a future board meeting, specific to a possible levy or other funding requests.
So in the meantime, if I could just ask that if there's other specific information that you'd like me to generate, I'll leave some cards, and please get ahold of me, and I'll pull that information together. I want to make sure that you have all the information that you need to prepare for that, whatever that next meeting may be. And I'll certainly try to make myself available to meet with you again as soon as possible.
We appreciate that. And if there's any information you need from county staff, whether it's the appraiser for compression questions or elections, you know, we'd be more than happy to supply that too, so.
Also, I think 57 is young. Put that in your notes.
I'm noting that now, 57 is young. So, thank you for coming today, and thank you for everyone in the audience that came to listen. You know, Extension's always a very lively conversation, it fills the room almost every time we talk about it. So, I appreciate it, and we'll be talking to you soon. I'm sure that our staff will be talking with you about scheduling the next work session
Great.
Later this week, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if we could, before we break for lunch, I'd like to deal with the consent calendar, because there are some items I think that need to be sent out today, and also the human resources items before we go to break. Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
The motion is seconded. All those in favor of consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So moving on to Item 6A, Order of 1509-2206, in a matter of approving benefit changes between Lane County and Lane County Association Local 626, in offering FY 1516 voluntary separation incentive program. And I believe we have Marcia Edwards, like Inga, and.
Bring some for those guys.
I'm so glad we didn't break for lunch yet. Now you don't have to take lunch.
Thank you.
It's a beauty. Any black beans in this? No, but there's some pumpkin puree. Ms. Edwards.
Thank you, Chair Bozovic, and thank you, commissioners, for talking with us this afternoon. As you know, we've been working on how we can invest in our employees and also promote wellness while saving a few dollars for the county. So, some of the things that we've been doing in that regard, as you probably know, is self-funding. We moved to that August 1st for our medical benefits. We'll be opening an employee clinic around mid-December. Working on lots of wellness initiatives, and I think you're going to be hearing about the latest one later on in the board meeting. And also our health insurance. And we're going to continue to discuss options with our employees. And most recently, Inga and I were able to meet with a couple of our associations that stepped forward and were willing to participate in some benefit changes, and also in regards to a voluntary separation program. So I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Onrood, so she can give us the details of that conversation.
Thank you, Marcia.
Thank you, Chair Bozovic, commissioners. So I'll run through a summary very quickly. I know that you have the packets in front of you for 626. And I want to just mention very quickly that Rick Keen, the 626 president, is here today with us. So I just want to recognize that he's here and appreciate that he came to be here with us today. The changes that you have in front of you, this is a memorandum of understanding with 626. They voluntarily came and opened discussions with us when they were not required to under contract negotiations, since their contract is not up until next year. And so they voluntarily came and spoke with Marcia and I on these subjects. We're very appreciative of that. In the packet you have in front of you, we've entered into, we have tentatively entered into an MOU with 626, and what will allow for employees that are part of 626 to apply for a voluntary separation incentive program, as Marcia said. This incentive program would allow employees, if approved by, if approved by the county administrator ultimately, and also if suggested by their department director, and only if there is a net savings to it, to apply for a voluntary separation program. That would allow employees to receive 250 hours of compensation at their hourly rate at the time of separation, and $500 per year of completed service, and that would not be prorated. Ultimately, it would be up to the county administrator to approve any of those voluntary separation applications that would come through. In exchange for this, 626 has agreed that, beginning January 1st, 2016, all new employees that are hired either on January 1st, 2016, or after, will have changes to their current health insurance plans. There'll be a new plan replacing what we currently have as a co-pay plan for county employees. It will be called the Prime Plus Plan. It'll act similar to a co-pay plan, but has higher deductibles, and also a higher out-of-pocket, and that's attached in the packet as well, through completed details for that new insurance plan. We will still be offering the high deductible plan with a health savings account. And with those new plans, the high deductible plan with the health savings account, employees, whether it's just an employee, employee plus children, employee plus family, will be $20 a month, costs to employees for that health insurance plan. And then for the new Prime Plus Plan, an employee-only will cost $30 a month, employee-plus-children $60 a month, employee-plus-spouse $90 a month, and employee-plus-family $120 a month. So while we are moving towards having employees contribute a portion every month to their health insurance, we also want to increase wellness and promote that. And so what we have agreed to in the MOU is that if employees participate in a health risk assessment and a biometric screening, that every month they will receive a $20 credit towards those contributions for their monthly contribution for health insurance. You'll also see for new employees hired before, on or before January 1st, after January 1st, 2016, a change in the time management accruals that are used for vacation and sick leave. We appreciate that, like I said, the units coming to the table and meeting with us, and we think this is the right step forward in changes to our health insurance.
Questions for staff? Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. And thanks for all the work that went into this, and thank you for coming to the table and voluntary bringing this forward, voluntarily bringing this forward. The key, I think, is if it will achieve savings, right? And it does go to the county administrator for final approval. The thing that I really am most interested in about the entire discussion, really, I am most interested in the wellness plan. You know, in helping employees identify where they can better live a healthy life and ultimately need less medical services. And, you know, we don't have a great deal of time to go into it right now, Ms. Edwards, but I know that that's been a main focus of yours since you, since Mr. Mokhaiske brought you to the organization. I really want to shout that out, that really, a lot of our efforts for the future are finding ways to help employees live healthier lives, and thereby have, an offshoot of that is less need to go to the doctor. But, you know, we're looking at our Community Health Improvement Plan. You look at the pillars of our Community Health Improvement Plan, all of them describe how we can all live longer, how we can all live more healthily, and how we can all be less of a tax on our families, and less of a tax on the community, and less of a tax on our own personal lives. So I think the $20 savings that you're offering is just a little shadow of the benefit that's going to be derived from that. If our employees do choose to take the $20 savings and do choose to have an evaluation, then they'll have an opportunity to see what they can personally do. There's no requirement that they do it. You know, we're not saying go out and quit eating sugar, go out and run 20 miles every two weeks, or seven miles a day, you know? But giving people options to do that. And I think that's what it's all about, is giving people choices, healthy choices. If we have healthy choices on what we eat, healthy choices on how we exercise, healthy choices on the amount of time we sleep, and healthy choices on what we breathe into our lungs, you know, it really is going to benefit everybody for the future, not just the savings in the health plan. That's a beneficial side effect. The most important thing is, are the people working here and their families are living healthier. And bravo, and bully, you know, keep it up. This is, I'm really, really pleased with the direction this is going. And ultimately, everybody in the county will have an opportunity to live a more healthy life. That is a real saving, you know? You can, paying for, writing a check for a health care plan is just a check, but adding a year to somebody's life, there's no price you can place on that. There is nothing you can do that will place a price on that. So that's what it's all about, and that's what really gets me charged up about. It's what makes, you know, elevating our heart rate daily is a great thing for bringing down your blood pressure. My heart rate is elevated just thinking about what we're doing, so thank you very much.
So, any? Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thank you, staff. I want to thank both our union representatives, 626, Rick and, and Rick, for, not Rick. Yes, yes. Anyway, thank you for being here today, and I really, I apologize to Mr. Keen for, I think you've been here for three hours or more, so I'm sorry. As an agenda team member, I'll try to, maybe next time, see that this is scheduled with time certain, because I feel bad that you've had to be here. Because this really is a very important item. Because this really is a very important item that we're discussing today, and one that, once again, I want to say thank you for your leadership, the two of you, from the standpoint that, you know, I've been on the board when you brought proposals before that really made a difference in our ability to provide services and keep our costs within check, so that we can deal with the blows that we get from reductions of resources. You know, we've heard Commissioner Farr, I think, really speak to the wellness piece and how we want to support our employees. But on the other side, we are really challenged with how we balance the resources that we have and some of the upcoming mandates that we have that I don't think a lot of the citizens really understand that we have. We have what we call a Cadillac tax that's going to come before the county in 2018, and we have from today until then to figure out how our programs won't be subject to that increase or that, I guess, tax from the federal government. It seems strange to have a government tax and other government. But anyway, I guess that's the way it's going to work. And so, you know, this proposal's going to help us be able to deal with that in the future. And I really appreciate their understanding, willingness to bring these to us, and the great work that their individual employees do for the county. So, thank you for taking the lead and helping make Lane County a better place to live.
Commissioner Orson.
I just wanted to join Commissioner Stewart's remarks here on the topic of working with our partners, 626 and Admin Pro, the employees that do a lot of the work at Lane County Public Works. And I appreciate our own staff in working with them and coming to an agreement that all sides can approve today. So, thank you so much.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just echo those comments as well, and to the, I think, to our employees from both Admin Pro and 626, my apologies, and again, I'm sorry the legislature just couldn't get us a transportation package. Really disappointing, and I can't say that enough. Hopefully, we can get something generated on the Fed side, but I think that would have been extremely helpful, but it is what it is. But thank you again for working with us. Really appreciate it. Thanks.
And I'll just add in here my thanks to both the bargaining units, but also my thanks to the non-represented employees, and just to Lane County's employees in general. Time and time again, our employees step forward with their own initiatives on how we can be more efficient or save money so that we can deliver greater services to the taxpayers with the lack of resources we are continuing to have due to our federal forest funding and every other issue out there. It just amazes me how often our employees are the first to step forward and suggest these items. I'd love to take credit for this, but it was, you know, our employees that came up with this idea. And then, it was our HR staff, this idea to wrap in some changes for new employees. People may not understand that we turn over about 10% of our workforce every year. So, as we're looking to 2018, and how do we lower our risk due to the, quote, Cadillac tax, which, by the way, we were told it was a fee when they were passing the legislation. And then, when they went to the Supreme Court, they described it as a tax so they could keep it constitutional. But that's besides the point. But, you know, as we move forward, it's just so great to see these partnerships that our employees put forward. And, you know, having, you know, by 2018, we should have 20% of our employees be under these new programs in these departments because of that turnover. That's going to be 20% less risk we have, although our high deductible plan, HSA plan, doesn't hit the Cadillac definition, I don't believe. But we still have that other co-pay plan that does. But as we move people off that co-pay plan and look to figure out how we're going to avoid the Cadillac tax, this is just a way of getting there. And it's with that turnover, and it doesn't even matter how many employees actually take the voluntary separation. We're still going to get that natural turnover as people retire, even without that, or move on to other careers or whatever, and we hire new people in. We have that benefit in this agreement. And I really appreciate the employees of these two unions who, you know, started the whole thing with getting us on to two common, you know, health insurance programs when we had close to 20 before they started their initiative. And we worked out with seven bargaining units to be on two common plans is an amazing thing in the first place. That was them. You know, and these guys are stepping up again, and I just can't say how much I appreciate the work of both Admin Pro and 626.
Commissioner Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Order 1509-2207 in the matter of approving benefit changes between Lane County and Lane County Association Local 626, and offering the fiscal year 1516 voluntary separation incentive program.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So, that moves us on to 1509-2207, in the matter of approving the same initiative for our Administrative Professional Association of Lane County, Inc. Any further explanation necessary?
It's essentially, you'll see, it's essentially the same package with the Administrative Professional Association of Lane County, and Ed Daniels, as we mentioned, is here, the president. He's in the audience now, so I just want to thank them again, and you will see similar changes as was described with the 626 package.
Any questions for staff?
Commissioner Stewart. I have a question. I'd like to move approval of Order 15-09-22-07, in the matter of approving benefit changes between Lane County and the Administrative Professional Association of Lane County, Inc., and offering the fiscal year 1516 voluntary separation incentive program.
Second. Been moved and seconded.
And I guess there's... I just want to make one comment. I'm sorry, Ed. It's been too many years, what, 10 years, with you and your brother flagging, and I apologize. I know better, so thanks, Ed.
Any further discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to Order 1509-2208, in the matter of approving benefit changes for non-represented employees for FY 1516, and offering a voluntary separation incentive program. And any further discussion from staff or information?
No, it's, again, basically the same information that we have just given you. And I would also, you know, as you pointed out, kudos go to our non-rep staff, you know, for, you know, being willing to participate in this, so very pleased.
Any questions for staff?
Commissioner Stewart. I'd like to move approval of Order 15-09-22-08, in the matter of approving benefit changes to the non-representative employees, and offering the fiscal year 1516 voluntary separation incentive program.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again very much, everyone involved.
Thank you so much.
So, with that, we're going to recess for lunch. I'm going to move county administration announcements till after lunch, and the other items after lunch.
That would include consent calendar after lunch?
Consent calendar we handle.
We did?
Yeah. Didn't you notice that right after, as people were leaving the room?
That was a long time ago.
Yeah. Yep. So, with that, I'm going to recess the Board of Commissioners, and we will reconvene in the Board of Commissioners' conference room at 1:30.